A good evening. Can everyone hear me? Thank you. Good evening and welcome, everyone, to the October 19th, 2022 Yarmouth Planning Board Meeting. I am Joanne Crowley, the Chair of the Planning Board. As this is a hybrid meeting involving both in-person and remote participants, I must read the following statement into the record. This is to formally advise that as required by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Paragraphs 18 to 25, in pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain state-of-the-emergency accommodations, signed into law on June 16th, 2021. The Yarmouth Planning Board will hold a public meeting on Wednesday, October 19th, 2022, at 5:30 in the Hearing Room, Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. The public is welcome to attend. Remote access provided through the meeting agenda posted on the town website under the Agenda and Minutes tabs by selecting Planning Board. I'd like to begin by taking roll call. Brad Goodwin.
Present.
Susan Britta. Will Rubenstein.
Here.
Chris Vincent. Jim Saban.
Present.
Crowley, present. Seeing that we have a quorum, I will now call the meeting to order for remote public participation during this public meeting and this public hearing. At my discretion, I'll invite the audience to comment. Online audience members can use the Raise Hand button to notify me. Dial-in audience members should press *9 on their phones. All audience members will be muted until you are recognized by me to participate. Once recognized, audience members are asked to identify themselves by first and last name and affiliation and address for public record. And with that, I'd like to please ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you so much. I hope everyone is able to gather a chair. We do have extra seating chairs here. Please pull them out if you so need them. I would like to now open the public hearing on our first agenda item, which is the Citizens Petition Zoning Article for the 2022 Special Town Meeting. I'll note the time as 5:40, Kathy, although it's three minutes fast, isn't it?
It's 5:36.
5:36, thank you. This for the Citizens Petition Article Number 23, under consideration for the Town of Yarmouth Special Town Meeting to be held on November 15th, 2022. We thank you for joining us this evening. For those members of the public who have joined us in person this evening, I would ask that you sign in, if you haven't signed in already, for the public record. In following the protocol for public hearings, I now need to read into the public record the public notice that was, appeared in the Cape Cod Times on October 4th and the 11th, 2022. This will serve as a brief overview of the amendments under consideration this evening. And I apologize, I wish I could read as fast as a 22-year-old, but I can't. As published in the Cape Cod Times on October 4th and 11th, 2022, Public Hearing Notice, Yarmouth Planning Board. The Yarmouth Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, October 19th, 2022, at 5:30 in the Hearing Room of the Yarmouth Town Offices, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. 02664 and via remote access via the town website or via telephone entering a webinar ID to consider the following Citizen Petitioned Proposal to amend the Yarmouth zoning bylaw. Number one, the Citizen Petition Zoning Article, amend the zoning bylaw related to accessory dwelling units by adding the definition for ADU and owner, outlining the purpose and intent of permitting ADUs, identifying procedural requirements specifying that ADUs would be permitted as an accessory used to lawful, single-family dwellings, except that no ADU shall be permitted on the lot at the same time as an accessory apartment per Section 407, that site plans, floor plans, and elevations shall be submitted prior to building permit issuance, and that ADU construction must conform with federal, state, and local laws and regulations, including all historic and Old Kings Highway requirements, if applicable, and identifying use and dimensional requirements necessary to issue a building permit within an existing or new, single-family dwelling or in a new or existing detached building, subject to the following: One ADU per lot, no variance allowed. Location of ADU entrance, appearance to remain that of a single-family residence property, to the maximum extent practical. ADUs shall be allowed no more than two bedrooms by right, with a special permit required for more than two bedrooms. Maximum habitable floor area of one-half the habitable floor area of the single-family dwelling unit, or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. Once added, an ADU shall not be enlarged beyond the square footage allowed. All parking to be off-street. Sewerage disposal to meet Title V and Board of Health Regulations, or if on municipal sewer, shall be certified by the Department of Public Works for adequate capacity to serve the additional unit. ADU rights and requirements are transferable upon sale of the property, and ADU shall not be used for boarding, lodging, or other commercial use, except for home occupation. And the ADU in principal dwelling to which it is accessory may be rented for periods not shorter than 12 months, consecutive months, and are prohibited from any use as rental units on a weekly or daily basis. And finally, amending Section 2.2, 202.5, Use Regulation Table by adding accessory dwelling unit as a new use allowed by right in the residential zoning districts R-87, R-40, R-25, and RS-40, and in B-1, B-2, MU, APD, MOD, HMOD-1, HMOD-2 zoning districts, and prohibiting ADUs in the B-3, RM, DOD, AED, VC-1, VC-2, VC-3, and VC-4 zoning districts. Copies of the complete proposed text for each amendment are available in the Planning Department, Yarmouth Town Offices, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass, during business hours, 8:30 to 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday on the Town of Yarmouth website. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on these proposals to amend the zoning bylaw should appear at the time and place designated. Written comments will be accepted and will be directed to the Planning Board care of Kathy Williams, Town Planner, at kwilliams@yarmouth MA.us. Yarmouth Planning Board, Joanne Crowley, Chair. So let me review how we're going to work through this public hearing on the protocols. First, we will ask the petitioners. The Planning Board is acting as the sponsor for this public hearing. This is not a Planning Board, a Planning Board article, but we do act as the best sponsor for the petitioner. So we'll have a presentation by the petitioners of the proposed article that they have on the warrant for the November Special Town Meeting. Any initial comments or questions from our Planning Board members? We will ask first, and then I will ask for public comment, and the petitioners will respond to the public comment. If you do have an interest in making a public comment, please state your name and your address and your affiliation, if it's appropriate. And then finally, Kathy Williams, our Town Planner, will summarize after all of that, any written comments that she has received to date. Please note that because we have, we may have only four voting members present this evening, the Planning Board may not be voting tonight, but will at our next scheduled meeting on November 2nd. I believe this article warrants the attention of our full board. Members who are unable to participate for the entire evening tonight will be required to review the video before up and prior to voting at our next meeting, if that's when we hold the vote. So I just wanted to let you know that we may not be able to vote tonight, that it may be in our best interest to delay to hear from our other Planning Board members who may not be available. So with that, I would like to start and invite the petitioners to come and introduce themselves and begin their presentation. Thank you.
Excuse me, Joanne, did we do roll call for quorum? Did we do that?
Yes, I did.
Just want to be sure we're on kosher.
Good.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
You, Madam Chairwoman. My name's Lisa Magnod. I'm the CEO of Housing Assistance Corporation. And this is my colleague, Scott LaJoy. And I believe on Zoom, we have my colleague, Ryan Castle, from The Realtors. Perhaps, or he'll be coming shortly.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll watch for him.
Thank you very much.
I believe he's there. Would you like him promoted to a panelist?
Sure.
Yes, please. So we're going to start with reading, if it's okay, the petitioner's letter before we go into our presentation, if we have time for that, or was that distributed and?
I think. From Sarah Coles?
Yes.
Yes, the Planning Board members all have a copy. You all have a copy of that.
Okay. Would you like us to read it for the benefit of the hearing?
That's really up to you. This, this hearing is your hearing, really. It's however you would like to proceed.
Okay, thank you. We'll read it.
Do have it, and we've all, we've all been able to, to read it. So thank you for sending it along.
Great, we'll, we'll start with that then, Scott.
Okay, so Sarah Coles, the other, the petitioner. Just wanted to apologize that she wouldn't be able to be here. So she had written as petitioner of Article 23, "I'm writing to provide the board with my reason for submitting the Citizens Petition and urge you to support it. Like many working families in our town, public meeting two nights in a row are challenging. Nighttime meetings are the reason I had to step away from the Town's Finance Committee, on which I served for several years. I must apologize, as unfortunately, I will not be able to make the hearing, though I will be speaking at the Board of Selectmen's meeting the prior night, which she was here. And I understand the board will be in attendance, at least a couple members of the board. Hopefully, that discussion coupled with this letter will be helpful to you in your deliberations. As a young professional in the past, Sarah is the past President of the Cape Cod Young Professionals and a small business owner, I see the impact and the severity of the housing crisis on a regular basis. Friends, colleagues, and those who would become future leaders of the town are struggling to retain a foothold. Let me be clear, there is absolutely no rental inventory. People are losing their rentals as their landlords sell, and there's nowhere for them to live. I am speaking of professional colleagues making very respectable incomes who can afford market-rate rents, but simply cannot find anything. We need swift action to increase our housing stock. While I appreciate that the town is focused on certain capital-A affordable housing initiatives, that housing does not benefit people like myself, the quote, "missing middle." Had my husband and I not been, bought our home in Yarmouth when we did, we would now be priced out of the homeownership market, and we, too, would be precariously living as renters, wondering if our landlord will sell and will have to move from the town we love. We need more missing middle, market-rate housing, and the only way we can get to that, get that, is by legalizing apartments in various forms. A by-right accessory dwelling unit, ADU bylaw, is low-hanging fruit and the easiest and fastest thing the town can do to address this need. I have seen towns around Yarmouth take up the model accessory dwelling units bylaw for several years now, while Yarmouth has lagged behind, which is why I filed this Citizens Petition. As a, as a community, we simply cannot wait any longer for such a simple, common-sense zoning change." And I think we'll touch on most of the other points she makes in the rest of her letter in our presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So first of all, I, I want to commend the Town of Yarmouth, and I see Mary Wigan is here. You guys are seen as a leader in building affordable housing in our region and adding units. So this isn't, this isn't an opportunity to criticize the town. Honestly, we're not trying to usurp the power of the town. I, I wanted to kind of speak from the perspective of where, from my seat and what, what I see in the region. So every day, we have people coming in our office who are desperate for housing. And as you may have read, or may have experienced, or know people, we have a legitimate housing shortage, and that is driving up the lack of affordability for residents in our region. And the thing that it was the most telling for us is the amount of money that we gave out to Yarmouth citizens during COVID was over $1 million. It was one of the highest towns that needed the, the most amount of subsidy in order for homeowners to pay their mortgage and renters to pay their rent. In fact, right now, in just July and August alone, we've given out over $100,000, and we are working with 20 of your residents, both homeowners and tenants. So this comes from a position of trying to get the right tools into the hands of people who can participate in the problem, right? You guys are problem solvers, as we've seen with Mary and what you guys have done for building affordable housing, but it takes a long time. And we need tools that can happen sooner in our, in our region, so that we can address the needs of the residents. And from our standpoint, looking at, looking at what, what's happening in Yarmouth and the need for housing, the bylaw that currently exists is, would, in, in, in some people's minds, we'd think it was a fine bylaw, but there's no, not able to get any production out of it. And so these minor changes to something that already exists, we believe, based on our experience and my, actually, my own personal experience building an accessory dwelling unit, can actually get some momentum and some units built. So that's really the framework that we're coming from, not to try to take over or, you know, usurp your power. It's really to try to show you, demonstrate the, the tools in the toolbox that other towns have used, so that we can help your residents. So as, I'm sorry, I got to look at the screen, Scott. So that's why, that's why we're here, all right? And we are, are having our own Town Hall meeting on November 1st, 6:00 p.m., at the Realtors Association. For anybody that wants to come and get into any more questions or looking for more information, we would be happy to answer those questions. We also launched a technical assistance program for homeowners who want to build an accessory dwelling unit, and we'll be available there to help them understand what that process is. And another thing that's really driving this is since we launched the program in February, over 20 homeowners in Yarmouth are interested in building an accessory dwelling unit, but are not able to under the current bylaw. So that, that's another factor that was really encouraging us to get involved and to help be part of the solution here. So the, the first thing that's really important, just to understand, is that building affordable housing, the capital-A affordable deed-restricted housing, is absolutely necessary in our region, right? We, we know we have an affordability problem, and we're not going to build our way out of that. So we need those deed-restricted properties, but we also need those smaller units that are more affordable, naturally affordable, like something, an accessory dwelling unit. Because many people make $60,000, $70,000, $80,000 a year, aren't going to qualify for your capital-A affordable, but still participate in our economy, still participate in our community, and still need a place to live. So we just put this slide up here to show the buying power. And, and you'll, you'll hear us talk about, over the next couple of months at Housing Assistance Corporation, the lopsided market that we have, where the wages of the people who live here don't match the cost of housing, right, and the rent or a place to buy. So we all know that. I'm not, I'm not telling you anything you don't know. I'm just giving you the information on your screen to see, for example, an accountant making $75,000 a year really has the buying power of $300,000, or a rent of $1,800, $1,875. And I can tell you, based on the market right now and what we're seeing, those places don't exist, right? I'm, I'm actually, I own an apartment in, in this town in Yarmouth, and my two-bedroom rents for $2,000. My, my tenant makes $120,000 a year. So it, it's, the, the inventory doesn't exist at the prices that the wages can pay, right? And if you go down in wages, you see they can, they can afford even less. And the thing that I wanted to just point out here, because this relates to why accessory dwelling units are so important, are looking at the, your residents, right? You have 17% with children, and you have 32% whom are seniors. That 32% senior population, the ADU product is perfect for. It gives them passive income, and they can either move into the smaller apartment, or they can, and rent out the bigger house, whether it's a family member or somebody in the community, or they can do the opposite. Stay in the bigger house, have their family there, and rent out to a child or to a community member the smaller apartment. So it gives them that ability to stay in place and age in place, which is something that we're seeing in our region is hugely needed for people. And we know, just looking, right? We've just touched on this a little bit. The prices are just out of reach, looking at how much homes are going for and what the real cost of rentals are, market-rate rentals. So accessory dwelling units do a couple of things, right? They help to repurpose the existing house. You're not using up any more of coverage of your lot than is already allowed in any of your bylaws or regulations. It, and it adds, again, this passive income for a homeowner, and it adds the protection of having other rental inventory in your region for, as we're seeing, the tenants who need that affordability and need help in the region. I know in other towns, and I, I haven't, didn't research it for, for Yarmouth, but I know in other towns, one of the things that we're seeing quite a bit is the displacement of locals, right? The, the year-round rentals are selling. They're selling to somebody who either wants to rent it seasonally or live in it themselves. And one of the staggering statistics that we're seeing throughout the region is that we are losing in, on Cape Cod, so this isn't Yarmouth-specific, but Yarmouth has a large rental inventory. We're seeing that we're, we're losing about 1,000 households a year that make under $100,000. That's not sustainable for our region. They're being replaced by people who make over $100,000. And that's fine, right? We want to be welcoming, but the reality is, that's our workforce. Those are the people that, that built Cape Cod, right? Those are the people that we also need to be trying to retain in some way. And giving people this option of a rental or how to make sure that their house is adding value or the passive income is something that is a real, serious tool that's good for the town and good for its residents. So what, what, what ADUs don't do is they don't develop more open space. They don't tax the infrastructure that's already been zoned for and planned for. So you can't, if you are, if you have a lot that only allows two bedrooms or three bedrooms or four bedrooms, you can't add more than you are already zoned for. So it's not taking up any more resources or capacity. So it's not taking up open space. And it's, the thing about it is, it is not costing taxpayer dollars, right? With capital-A affordable, we're very dependent on subsidy and taxpayers helping to subsidize that construction and pay for that housing. With an accessory dwelling unit, the cost, the burden, is on the homeowner. They get the equity, they get the income, and they have to bear the full burden, right? That's why the affordability piece, the having a deed restriction or any kind of restriction that has that affordability component to it makes it very unappealing for a homeowner to take the risk to take on that debt, to service that debt. You're, you're, you're having built an accessory dwelling unit, right? I have now an additional $150,000 of debt that I have to service. If you start capping the amount of rent that I can make or dictating who can live on my property, right? I live there. I'm, I have to be very careful who's living on my property with me and my children. If you're, if you're limiting my choice and what I can do, you're making it extraordinarily difficult, but really, as an investor and, and my money, I'm not going to take the risk, right? It's too scary, it's too expensive, the rents might be too low. I might not have a choice of who lives there. Those are, that's not good for our, good for people. That's not good for homeowners to really invest in this crisis and participate in this crisis. I mean, again, I've hit this point, right? Flexibility for homeowners. I, I just can't stress it enough, that it is, it is a tool that we're actually going to start doing some consulting with people who are at lower and moderate incomes to help them understand the huge equity gain and the, and, and the, the marching towards wealth that this can do for people. And so whether it's a single mom like myself who needs, need, you know, I'm not a wealthy person, this is my largest asset. So how do I maximize my asset? How do I set myself up for retirement? When my children leave the house, are they renting it? Am I moving? It gives me a lot of flexibility and a lot of options as a single woman. It also, you know, considering someone aging in place or someone aging, again, I, I hit on that earlier, but it gives them a lot of, lot of choices about what to do with their asset and how they can stay put. And I think that I, I, I got that with the retirees. So this is where I hand it over to my colleague, Ryan, to get into the, the details of the proposal and that, that's before you. But before we do, I wonder if you have any immediate questions that I can answer.
Any members from the board have any, any questions? At this point? Hearing none?
Thank you.
Why don't we continue?
Thank you very much. Ryan, are you around somewhere? There you are.
I am right here. So move forward in the presentation. If you, Lisa, if you can, or Scott, if you can control that for me, that'd be great.
I got you.
So details on the proposal. What we did was, you know, on minimum lot size, you know, I think some people have asked, and what we're going to highlight here is areas where we've heard feedback already, so we can explain the purpose and the reason for the way it's written the way it is. You know, minimum lot size, so what we do is we mirror what is currently allowed for a single-family home. As Lisa talked about, and first of all, Ryan Castle, the CEO of the Cape Cod and Island Association Realtors. So our headquarters is located in West Yarmouth. I've served on the Community Economic Development Committee in Yarmouth. And, and, you know, employ, you know, run a company that employs 12 people in Yarmouth. So this is not only dear to me as far as what we do for a living as far as advancing housing affordability, availability, and also expand, like, protecting private property rights, because I, I think this is a, this shouldn't be underestimated, that what we're trying to do is restore private property rights the way the, the history of Cape Cod is, and I'll talk about that. But, you know, I think that I worry as a, as an employer in Yarmouth, if I'm going out and someone leaves my, my, my company, and I have to go hire again, and I, I have to hire someone that's making $65,000 a year, where are they going to live? One of the first things I always ask, and everyone, Lisa asks, when she's employing 200 people, is, you know, do you have stable housing? Because if not, it's almost impossible with a lot of these nonprofits, like all of us are, of, of what we pay to have people actually live here and work here. So as we get into the details, the minimum lot size, there is not one because we're following all the other zoning bylaws. So you might look at this bylaw and say, well, where's the setbacks? Where's all this stuff? Well, you got to look and see how it plays into the larger Yarmouth zoning though, because we're not usurping any authority or any other proposals that the Planning Board or anyone else has already put in place through their bylaws, the Health Board, the Conservation Commission, anyone else. And so therefore, minimum lot size isn't needed because it's just allowing the available nitrogen flow, the available bedrooms, the, the number of people, the density, that you could already do in your house. If your house has four bedrooms, then you're not allowed that bedroom. You can just convert one into an accessory apartment, dwelling apartment. On parking, the bylaw does require off-street parking. Lawns, et cetera, are not acceptable off-street parking. That's in the regular general development areas of Yarmouth about how you handle off-street parking and parking on-site for an accessory dwelling unit. So, so when I say that, when I talk about bedrooms, when I talk about allowance of nitrogen flow, density, parking, there's a lot of requirements a homeowner's going to hear. So people here by right and assume everyone's going to be able to do it. And that's just simply not true. There's going to be a lot of homeowners that just can't do it because of the, the way things are laid out. And so you don't need the regulations and the bylaws. The existing Yarmouth regulations already handle all that. So on the next slide, a lot of people have talked about this issue. So we, we did not put in an owner occupancy requirement. One is, we don't feel that renters need to be watched, need to be monitored. The Yarmouth also already has an existing rental registration. So if you're planning to, you know, if you build an ADU and you rent it out, you're going to have to go through that rental registration inspection process already. But, you know, one thing that, as we've gone around the Cape and, and worked with other towns on, the, the hangup becomes, what is the definition of owner occupants? Because I would ask, you know, everyone, what is that definition? Because I would ask, you know, everyone, what is that definition? And well, then is a second homeowner an owner occupant or not? You know, and I actually believe, and I think a lot of people believe that second homeowners, it would benefit the community, public safety, the neighborhoods if second homeowners had an accessory apartment that someone lived in year-round. Someone's on that property, someone's watching out for that home. Some people are in our neighborhoods watching what happens. So there's not two or three, four homes in a row that may be vacant all winter. People are around, things are happening, and not only that's good for our business. So when I say that, I would put that out there. The other thing we did was, yes, we did expand it to allow for an LLC because the idea is for financial and planning purposes or for legal purposes, a lot of people may have a home and a trust or an LLC, and it even is their primary residence. And so the normal definition, the way you write it, includes LLC or trust or things of that nature. So whether it's a second home or primary home, it may be in that LLC. So you don't want to exclude those people as well. And back to the minimum lot size as well with this is, right? You don't want to only allow wealthy homeowners to do this. Because Lisa talked about the wealth building, the ability to get some income to help afford that house kind of thing. And Fannie Mae is making very good strides in changing their lending requirements to allow some of the rent from accessory dwellings to qualify for purchase of the home. And so we're seeing some really good movement around the country around that. And so what we want to do is make sure that those who want to try to obtain homeownership and become homeowners have the ability to achieve this. Next slide. So we've studied this. We, so I think a lot of people talk about, and this has been studied all over the country. A lot of people talk about, well, the time. Well, there has been time. If you remember back in 2018, 2019, Yarmouth proposed one. And on that, so as you do that, they looked at it, that one, we told you then, we didn't feel, we were going to oppose it because we didn't feel that it was one that was inclusive enough of everyone in the community. And so that failed that town meeting because of that. And so with that, then you also have the details of this proposal being that this is density wastewater and town services friendly, what we talked about. No more people, no more bedrooms, no more lot coverage than currently allowed. So essentially, if you're going for addition of your own house, if you want to add new construction into your house, it would be just same as if you wanted to add new addition to your house anyways. And so if you could do that without special permit.
I found this on the web.
I'm not sure who that is, so talking, so I will just move forward from that. On the next slide, enforcement and outcomes. You pull the permits issued by building, you share with planning and health. This is not a hard thing to administer. Every other town on the Cape is doing it, right? Like, you know, so you go and apply for building permit like you would for an addition. You share it with planning, you share it with the health board for enforcement. No towns have had problems, and most towns have only averaged seven to nine units per year. There is nothing in this that's going to cause thousands of units to come online a year. But this is a small bite of the apple to the larger problem. And I would end, you know, kind of about the details of the proposal as we go into the next slide of who supports legalizing ADUs. I would detail the two things. One, what Lisa talked about, this is a solution that doesn't require taxpayer money. So it protects the tax rate. Plus also, it takes pressure off housing off 28 corridor, right? We've seen a lot of talk about how much housing for the 28 corridor. Well, if you don't want housing on the 28 corridor and you don't want housing on already developed land, where do you want housing? Because we don't have a lot of, not, not open space that is not protected in Yarmouth. And so what we're trying to do is make sure that we're using the best resources we can on supporting legalizing ADUs across the Cape. There's a whole host of organizations, mine at the Association of Realtors, Cape Built Development, CCYP, Cape Cod Technology Council, Housing Assistance, Open Cape, Home Builders Remodel Association of Cape Cod, the Cape Cod Chamber Commerce, the American Planning Association supports by right ADU bylaws. The ARP supports by right ADU bylaws. In fact, they have a model ADU bylaw that's by right that is very similar to the one we're proposing here. Because they understand how helpful will be the seniors. So as we move to the next slide, I wanted to update you around what's happening around the landscape. As a result of our efforts around the Cape, 12 towns have legalized ADUs across the Cape. Every town that took up the model bylaw passed it at town meeting with over 76% of the vote. In many cases, it was on a voice vote. Now, this bylaw, and I want to be very clear, does meet the conditions of housing choices. Housing choices was legislation that was passed by the Massachusetts Legislature proposed by Governor Charlie Baker, championed by our own state Senator Julian Seer as well. And so by being needing housing choices definition, this bylaw will only take a simple majority, not two-thirds, like most signing bylaws, to pass a town meeting. None of the towns that passed this have had any problems with enforcement, parking, water quality, or any of the other issues that we've heard thrown up out there right now. And some have had it for four or five years. I don't think you've had any problems with the tenants and the actual units that have been built in Yarmouth. I haven't heard any responses around that. It's just the lack, the bylaw as written isn't as successful as it can be because it doesn't allow for more people to be able to do that. So as we go forward with that, and then the last slide I'll end on and then be able to take questions as well. Lisa or myself, is that we are having that town hall meeting November 1st, 6:00 PM at our office at 22 Midtech Drive, so that anyone who wants to come here more is welcome to and hear more about this proposal, ask questions. We love questions. We think, you know, we're not trying to usurp any kind of process. We just need, we just know that as an organization put together this year, Housing to Protect Cape Cod, which is made up of the Association of Realtors, Housing Assistance, Cape Cod Chamber Commerce, the Home Builders Remodel Association of Cape Cod, is that we need action quickly to try to solve this housing crisis. And so we want more discussion around this, which is why we're having town hall meeting. We're going to have a lot of other virtual places. We're going to run a robust campaign of asking people to reach out to us and reaching out to people ourselves, saying, hey, have you heard about this? What are your reservations? Let's talk about it. And also, once again, like I said, we're probably only going to see a couple of these. This is a small bite of the apple. This is a small, small change, probably the by right change being the biggest from your current bylaw to this one. And we think that people will be able to, in small bites, take advantage of this to try to help solve the overall housing crisis.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Castle. Any further comments or parts of your presentation you'd like to bring forward before we open it up for public comment?
No, I think the only thing that I would like to end with because is this change in our population that we're seeing that right now, based on the price of housing, a household needs to be making two hundred thousand dollars a year in order to afford to live here and buy here. And I couldn't afford to live here or raise my family here. And I know there are many people in the same situation. And again, it's tools like these that allow people like me and the people who make under that amount of money to be able to live here and raise our families here. And I think it's just important for us to realize the future, what we're looking at for the future of Cape Cod and for Yarmouth is not trending well if we don't try to have things that we can do right away.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for your presentation. So now I'd like to open it up to public comments. And I'd just like to, since you are the petitioners and we obviously are here as planning board members to be as well informed as we can about this. I mean, that's part of the process here. But this article will be on the warrant regardless of how we vote on it. And I'd just like to ask if you have a preference as to if you'd like to hear the supporters first or we'll just randomly have people come up, whatever you would prefer. We can conduct the balance of the hearing.
I think randomly would be the best. That way, if people have questions, we can address those after each one to make sure their questions get addressed as well, if that's appropriate.
So we'll do random. I'd like to start in the first row. Anyone in the first row? In the second row? Please come forward. If you wouldn't mind, the microphone at the podium, please. Thank you. Your name?
Joan Elaine, 121 Cam Street, Unit 9. We have a severe shortage crisis. The time has come for us to really dig deep and do some stuff. I was born here in Yarmouth. I grew up in Yarmouth. I want to stay in Yarmouth. And to do that, I would like you, the board, to seriously give consideration to this proposal. It was well thought out. They answered a lot of questions. And when my son can afford to buy a house in Yarmouth, I hope to be able to rent an ADU from him. Thank you.
Thank you so much. On the same row, yes, please?
Good evening. My name's Stacy Ober, resident here in Yarmouth. Appreciate the presentation this evening, and we've heard a lot of positives. But I want to, because this is a policy decision, just highlight some areas that where I have concerns based on having been a participant in the last dialogue when the town rejected any change to the ADU bylaw. There was very thoughtful discussion at that time. A lot of problems were foreseeable that residents brought forward. And so I'm grateful to have the present, presenters acknowledge that the law changed here in Massachusetts. It was signed by Governor Baker in January of 21, which now would allow just a simple majority to adopt a bylaw change where previously, when we voted on it, you needed two-thirds majority. So I'm hearing the presenters repeatedly acknowledge they're not trying to usurp the will of the town. But as a resident here, to have this debate come forward again so quickly feels a little bit with the law having changed that this is, in fact, an attempt to usurp the decision that was made by residents not that long ago. My one response to the presentation is acknowledging that the COVID money, you know, the lion's share of it went to residents in Yarmouth. The largest assistance was given to those living here to be able to make their mortgage payment and rent payments. I think, based on my experience, that's because Yarmouth is probably the most affordable town here on the Cape. My husband has a colleague, for instance, that took a job in P-Town and landed in Yarmouth as the only affordable place to live and does that hour commute. So I don't want that to suggest that somehow residents in Yarmouth are struggling more than other areas of the Cape. I just think we probably have a larger share of individuals that probably make a lower salary that live here and might have been susceptible to needing that kind of assistance. There's a lot of promises here. I just want to first note number five, providing homeowners with the means of obtaining rental income to defray housing ownership costs. I am concerned about the language, for instance, that would allow for the ADU, the owner to be not just individuals holding title to the property, but also individuals as a trust, corporation, or LLC. And I want to just acknowledge there is an absolute legal distinction between a trust owning property and a limited liability corporation. As an attorney, I did own an LLC with my business partner. I did see, I don't know if others did, on 60 Minutes, corporations, large corporations that are coming across the country buying up properties to then increase rents as a profit opportunity. And so I just want to flag that. I have a concern, you know, where the presenters even noted that we have this problem of single-family owners, locals that are selling their single-family homes and are being displaced. They're capitalizing on the market. And so if you do just some simple math, in my opinion, and a corporation could come in, buy a single-family home and convert that with an ADU and double the rent because then they'd be renting it not only perhaps to the structure that was there, but now rental income as well from an ADU unit. So these are just some of the pitfalls that I'm able to foresee and just want to play devil's advocate on a presentation that made this sound like there were not going to be any issues. You know, there's a real, there would be a real incentive for real estate developers to look at that. The last thing I want to highlight is that my understanding of the building code is that you cannot allow a bedroom or someone having living quarters where there is a furnace located. So if you were a single-family owner, and let's say you had an unfinished basement, maybe in order to get back to providing the homeowner with the means of obtaining rental income to defray their own cost of living, I'm not certain that the, you know, a basement apartment, for instance, is a practical option for that senior or single-family homeowner because of the building code. So I would want the planning board to look at the building code because if that's not a viable option, then we are looking at perhaps additional structures on an individual lot. And that would significantly change the appearance, the character of our neighborhoods. So I think that's another consideration I'd like the planning board to consider. So I've taken enough time. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the second row? Okay, the third row? Certainly. I won't forget you over there. I promise. I promise. I won't, I won't, I won't miss you, Vida. Don't worry. Mr. Sullivan?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the committee here and at home. Tom Sullivan from West Yarmouth. First of all, I'd like to read a letter from a fellow resident here in the town of Yarmouth. It's from Chris Greeley. She lives in West Yarmouth. She has a commitment, so she could not be here tonight. The letter reads as follows. "I'm unable to attend tonight's meeting, but would like to go on record as opposing the current ADU petition article at this time. I feel very strongly that any such article with potentially serious consequences to our community needs a comprehensive study prior to passage. At the very least, this article should be indefinitely postponed until such a study is undertaken." Among the consequences, there are four she's listed. One, a significant change in the chatter of character of residential neighborhoods, especially with the issues of parking and proximity to units of neighboring homes. Two, the potential for seasonal rentals versus year-round housing. Three, the stress on septic systems, leaching fields, water usage, which is already seriously under addressed issues in the town. This is a serious issue that the sewage system plans are prioritized for commercial zones and residential areas may be decades away from completion. We are currently needing a new water wells. Four, other communities in working to increase housing accessibility have undertaken serious comprehensive studies before adopting such changes. Brewster and Chatham have even placed a cap on the number of allowed per year. I think this, I think this vote should not be taken at a mid-year town meeting on a dark November night. We have had significant issues with attendance for similar meetings. Also, the article appears at the end of the warrant for the guaranteeing participation of the vote by significantly small number of residents on a decision with significant impact to our community. I believe that a more thoroughly studied article presented to an annual town meeting would be much better ways to address the public needs and issues of Yarmouth. Please do not support the article at this time. Signed, Chris Greeley, West Yarmouth. My own comments that I would like to is, I believe what Chris has said is true. This needs to be studied. And as I said with the selectman last night, I asked the selectman to refer this article back to the planning board. Let you guys do your work and the other boards in town. Our needs here in the town, our bylaws in town are different than other towns. Give an example, one came to mind, parking. Don't we have a limit of the amount of cars at residences? Isn't the amount of cars on a residential property limited in the town? I thought I saw that once.
There are certain sections of the bylaw, like the Village Center overlay.
There are certain sections of the bylaw, like the Village Center overlay district, we have minimum and maximums, but that's really the only location, the residential zoning districts, there's really no restrictions.
That comes to mind. There were questions last night from the board to other members here in regards to nitrogen loading and stuff. So there were questions that are unanswered. Another question, if this goes before town meeting, November 15th, and a motion to indefinitely postpone is passed, you can be barred for two years before you can bring it back to town meeting. So I would suggest, for the best interest of the petitioners, so you don't lose it, because you have the signatures, to pull the article at the present time and resubmit it before the January deadline for the May town meeting. That gives the planning board and the board of selectmen you to have your hearings and to vet this process out. This is coming too fast, too soon, and I think a lot of residents down are not aware of what's going on on this. So that would be my suggestion personally, to pull the article, put it in the annual town meeting in May. Let the planning board do their process and go through this, and maybe bring in other departments, building, fire, police, et cetera. Okay? Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Chairwoman Crowley, as I wanted to be able to respond to those questions that he proposed in that letter, if that's okay? Because there were some questions in that letter that I think she asked, and I wanted to clarify. One is that it's not, you cannot build any closer to someone's house than you already can, right? So that is already not allowed. Wastewater and water issues, you can't do anything more than it's already allowed. So it can't get any worse than what the homeowner can already do on their property. So as we talk about these, once again, I think if you listen and understand the proposal, all of these things that come up from neighbors, that homeowner can already do, that's your neighbor. And so under the Yarmouth's bylaws, and as you talked about with parking, whatever's already in the Yarmouth parking in any bylaw would still be enforceable. This doesn't usurp or change any other bylaw other than the accessory dwelling, affordable accessory dwelling and family accessible dwelling bylaw that already exists in Yarmouth. So it doesn't change any of those other bylaws from parking, the amount of people. You know, the last person that spoke before about furnaces, if you can't, if that can't be a bedroom, that can't be a bedroom. So it wouldn't be permitted to be able to build that. So that's the kind of stuff that is handled by this bylaw. And that's the beauty of the simplicity of this bylaw is that it doesn't change those other bylaws.
I would like any comments from the row along the wall. How'd I do, Ms. Morris?
Vida Morris, Yarmouth Port. I want to see if I can understand this correctly, the phrase "by right." It seems to me that when, what we have right now on the books requires people, whenever they want to add anything to an existing building or anything like that, they have to go before the zoning board. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes, in most, in most cases, yes.
And in this case, would they be going to the zoning board?
No.
I would imagine, Kathy?
Not unless they need some other type of relief, but the ADU use itself would be allowed by right under this petitioned article.
Kathy, on that question, I want to ask you, because I think this is important. You know, if I'm just building an addition that doesn't need any relief under the zoning code, I don't go before the planning board, right? The zoning board.
You would never have to come to the planning board, but...
Or the zoning board of appeals.
We have 87% of our lots are currently pre-existing non-conforming lots. That means we have a very, a lot of very small lots. We have non-conforming lots and non-conforming structures. So when people want to start doing things to those structures, we do understand that you had this existing, it's been there for a long time. We've made changes since then. So we do allow for some changes that can occur through a special permit. So depending on what you're doing in the size lot that you're doing on it, you may be able to put in an ADU, although the use might be allowed. Other things might require a special permit.
Exactly. That's what I was trying to get at. So if you were going to the zoning board of appeals now to add an addition, you'd still have to go to the zoning board of appeals. The use of that, of that, of that, of that addition would allow for an accessory dwelling, but you'd still have to follow the ZBA process.
Susan has a comment.
Just making a comment. The reason the town is very stingy about by right is when you do something by right, there is no requirement for notification to your neighbors. That's why we're very stingy about not giving by right projects. When you go in front of zoning, they're required to let, they send out a notification. They notify the neighbors. And the notion that something could be this extreme, and this would have such profound impact on our neighborhood to be done by right, is almost a shocking concept, because it requires no notification to anyone. It means you have a right to do it. And the fact that you are going to double the density in any neighborhood and claim that that is something you do by right is simply not a good investment strategy for this town, and especially for the residents who have invested in a suburban neighborhood, who expect it to remain a suburban neighborhood and have these, have these ADU units in their neighborhood under very, if they're allowed at all. And we currently have an ADU provision on the books. It has worked. I was on zoning, the years I was on zoning, I remember only one time we did not grant an ADU permit, and that's because the applicants had not followed the procedure.
Madam Chair, are we having board comments now, or are we still in the middle of this?
Madam Chair.
If I may, if I may.
Shut up.
If I may. I didn't know how long you were going to go, Susan.
I want to clarify the notion that by right is extremely...
I appreciate.
Unusual.
I appreciate your comments. I also appreciate the fact that you are a former member of the zoning board of appeals and bring some knowledge and experience from your membership on that board. But I would like to hold our discussion on planning board comments, questions, and opinions until after the public comment period, so we can all engage together. Yes?
Jim may need to leave. He's raised his hand.
So in other words, I just think that kind of situation opens up the town to possible liabilities, because some people, that's by right, in other words, some people have slightly peculiar ideas about, you know, architectural value, shall we say, or what have you. And at least, you know, when the zoning board looks at the, what they see before them, sometimes they step in and make sure that some of the rights of the neighbors are protected. And I mean, if I can think of a situation where somebody might have a very beautiful view towards the water or something like that, right? As things stand, and then somebody comes in with this by right, you know, proposal to build something and decides to make it one and a half or two stories high or something like that, and it takes away the view that the neighbor had. So anyway, this, but I thank you very much, Mr. Bertha, because I think it was...
Thank you.
Chairwoman Crowley, if we can, Chairwoman Crowley, if we can clarify something. If you, in all respect to everyone, if, if you have to go to the ZBA today to do something, you would have to go to the ZBA after this to do something. It doesn't take away that. I just want to be very clear.
Does Jim need to leave? I have a, I have a, I have a member of the planning board who has raised his hand. Jim, do you have a comment, or you'd like to?
Madam Chairman, I'm going to hold my comments. I'd like to comment with regards to by right. But I will abide by your wishes to hold my comments till the end. Unfortunately, I've been exposed to COVID, so I'm not going to be leaving your meeting to go to my other meeting. So you're stuck with me for the rest of the meeting.
So you will be joining us for the duration?
I am here for the duration. Yes, ma'am.
I'm glad, I'm glad to know that.
And I will reserve my comment for, in the future.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Saban. Anyone else on the row by the wall?
You've got people online, Joe, with their hands raised.
I'm going to get to the people online in a second.
Okay.
Thank you. The next row, any comments? Yes, sir?
My name is Susan Sokowski. I live at 15 Cleveland Way, West Yarmouth. I am a steering member of the Hyannis Park Civic Association. I have questions more than I have comments at the moment. Questions being that I'm not sure how this doesn't add any nitrogen or density than already allowed, because we in Hyannis Park have been fighting in Lewis Bay for a great time regarding the water quality and the nitrogen seepage into Lewis Bay. Also, I'm curious about the, it doesn't affect Title V or sewerage. Is sewerage coming in my lifetime? Doesn't say anything about not, non-Title V, which in my name, in my immediate neighborhood, most of the houses have regular old septic systems because they were built in the 1950s. So that has not been addressed at all. I'm a little curious about the protecting private property rights and no minimum lot size. I don't know what the town bylaws are. I have to admit that I am ignorant of that fact. So I'm not, I would go more to asking you on the planning board what the minimum lot size is. I know that, Kathy, she just explained that everybody's been kind of grandfathered in, so to speak, which is a little confusing. I'm really concerned about the no on occupied, no on occupancy, especially with LLCs. Currently, I live next door to a home that is owned by an LLC. It is Section 8 housing. It is neat, it is, it is not well taken care of. The landlord does not care about the condition of his property or of his, or of his renters. And also, he owns a marina in Hyannis, in Harwich, and dumps his non-paid-for boats next to my home. So I'm very concerned about how this is going to overlay with what the neighbors next door are looking at all the time. Also, I personally, and this has nothing to do with the town, I actually have no problem with housing on the 28th corridor. It certainly is better than dumpy motels and sketchy businesses. I do have a quick question about your statistics. I would love to know where you got your statistics for living in town for $200,000 a year, and also that the average teacher makes $60,000 a year, because if that's it, we need to pay our teachers better. And the issues we have for those of us in town is the town doesn't deal with the issues we have right now. Believe me, we have enough problems that we can't get addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Castle, do you want to respond to any of those particular questions?
No, I mean, I can, on the nitrogen, I'll say again, and I've said this several times, you can, this would allow you to, this doesn't allow you to add bedrooms, right? So if you currently have a property that allows two bedrooms only, then you would only be allowed to have two bedrooms after this. And so you probably wouldn't be able to do an ADU. And so that's where we said that, the same with three or four bedrooms. So I just want to clarify on the nitrogen thing for that. But we, but also, we know the Hyannis Park Association has had several questions around. We're happy to come to their meeting and talk about this.
So the Hyannis Park Civic Association, please take note that they would like to come and talk to you at your convenience. And that might be helpful to clarify some particular issues we might have in mind.
And may I just interject? Sure. I didn't keep close enough notes on all of her questions, so I'd be happy to meet with her privately and answer the questions about her statistics or explain more the lot size. I wasn't, I wasn't...
A minimum lot size, it all depends.
Exactly.
You know, it depends on, you know, what you want to, what you want to build. So we will leave that and her generic questions, so hopefully you can reach out to that particular neighborhood association. Let's, let's continue with the public comments. The next row, I'm not sure what number I'm on. Let's start here with the gentleman in the striped shirt.
My name's Paul Hawkins. I live in Baxter Ave. I'm also part of the Hyannis Park Civic Association. Couple of things that I heard tonight is kind of concerning to me. One is that we want this to be affordable housing. With the square foot price to do additions, you're probably talking between 200 and 300, somewhere between 200 and $300 a square foot. That means you're going to need a high rent to have a payback on it. I don't see this as solving a small rent. I just don't see that happening. But the other thing is, I heard that this is a small bite on his, his housing crisis and that there's no impact to the town. I didn't hear anything about the police, the fire, the EMS, the teachers, the healthcare, more people. There's going to be no restriction on how many people can occupy that. Not sure what that does to the population and to the schools and things like that. We've got a problem already with water and stuff. We've lost a well or two. We've had a water ban all year because of the drought. And I just see it as being more problems to the town. I keep hearing, you don't have to worry about it, there's no impact. I don't think we know enough to say that there's no impact. And I think that is, I'm also concerned about an LLC coming in and converting, because they do have some resources to do that. And I think that's a big concern to the town, so I think that's, that's something we really have to look at. So I would propose, as I think that, the same thing that Chris said about, I think we need to study this and understand it more and just not blindly trust that there's no impact to the town. So.
Thank you very much.
Sure that we were saying there was no impact to the town. So I'm not, I'm not sure what he's hearing that we're saying. And so it would be, it would be good for us to have another conversation offline, so I can understand what he's hearing and we can do a better job of explaining it. But there was no point saying that this was supposed to be affordable units, capital A affordable. That's what already exists in your bylaw. We're, we're agreeing that the cost of construction, you can't service the debt with a capital A affordable rent. So we are 100% in agreement there. You need to give the owners the flexibility to be able to make that investment and have a rent that can service the debt.
Thank you. And I might also add that there are occupation limits.
Yes.
There are, there are written occupation limits by, by the health code.
The rental regi...
They would be the same before and after this for how many people can occupy a house.
Whatever the health code is now. That's correct.
I own a rental in Yarmouth, and the rental registration process, they walk through and tell me how many people. And so it's a very thorough, I hold that up again as another strength of Yarmouth and hold it up for other towns to emulate, because it's very good from a landlord's perspective and from a tenant's perspective. It protects both of us.
Okay. Who's next? Yes. Thank you.
My name is Linda Boliger. I'm the president of Hyannis Park Civic Association, and I'm sorry that we were kind of taking out, Hyannis Park seems to be taking up a lot of airtime tonight, but it's only because we're a very, very, very tight neighborhood. And we're trying to protect, we've got a lot of forces that are affecting our neighborhood, and so we're really an involved community. Number one, I've already submitted our official position to the board, and I'm not going to reiterate. I'm not going to read through that. I'm just going to give a short synopsis of what our position is. Number one, we all recognize that there's a housing shortage, and it's national. It's not Cape, it's not Yarmouth, it's national. So I think that if we look at ADUs, and they've been around forever, but in the last 20 years, Freddie Mac data tells us that only 6.8% of for-sale listings right now involve ADUs. So they're not, they're a drop in the bucket. We really need to address housing issues with a much more bold proposal. We really need to address housing issues with a much more bold proposal. And I feel for people, I feel for young people who want to stay on the Cape. I, my own children who are, you know, who had started out, it was difficult for them. It continues to be a challenge for most young people getting out of college. I've been a landlord for thirty eight years in the greater Boston area. And I have to say, things have changed. The market reality is ugly. And we're not going to solve it with ADUs. And what we need to do is really to examine what the problem is, what resources Yarmouth has. And come up with a really comprehensive plan. But right now, all I'm hearing is, is that it's on the property, the residential property owner's backs here. We're pitting neighbor against neighbor. This is a very, very divisive proposal. Very divisive. And partly because of what Vita had suggested, and that's that term by right. We can't be making these, we can't be making policy decisions leaving out a butters. Let me tell you who Hyannis Park residents are. Many of us lived in multifamily homes growing up in towns like Brockton, Worcester, South Boston, Charlestown, Lynn, Hebity. And the American dream for all of us was to get the heck out of those cities, those multifamily, high-density environments and live the American dream in a single-family home. We can't, we can't ask people who can't, who worked hard all their lives to live in a single-family neighborhood that suddenly they're to accept the fact that their neighbor has now by right the opportunity to make their single-family home a multifamily home. Unacceptable. And I think you, everyone needs to understand that. Many of you who live on the Cape have lived an idyllic life. Not everybody is in that boat. And we don't want to see our lovely single-family home neighborhoods turned into multifamily. And granted, it's not going to be that many units. I mean, if we're talking about twenty people who've asked, who've inquired about this, that means that there's probably, there's between sixty and eighty neighbors of these people who are really going to be affected as well. Who have no voice. Give them a voice. Think about this before you move forward. Thank you.
Any, yes, I see hand raised.
Jay Frapery, I'm on Pheasant Cove Circle in Yarmouth Port. I just had a question of the petitioner. I was curious if they identified that the, the previous proposal, which was brought forward a few, few years ago, was too limiting. And I just wondered what those limitations were and if they could speak specific so we, I could understand what they were.
Yeah, absolutely. So we felt, one is the way they were proposing it last time is it was to actually add a minimum lot size. So you're picking winners and losers. Property owners on who could build an ADU and who couldn't. And we, we didn't like that. Two is the special permit portion. That you were going to special permit route. Because, and Elisa can talk more about this, but we've, we've, I think we've talked a lot about this, but it shouldn't just be for the wealthy, those that can afford attorney, those that can afford to go that special permit route and, and as they add more on that, on that vein. So if Elisa wants to comment more about that, that's my response to, to that. So, so the groups that have been supporting ADU by law across the Cape opposed it. And, and we feel that's why I didn't get two-thirds majority at last town meeting.
Yeah, the people who are looking to build accessory dwelling units are people who have lived on the Cape for a very long time and now find the situation unaffordable for them to be able to stay here. And so considering that they would then have to hire an attorney in order to move forward with finding a way to stay in a place that they helped build and that they raised their families in is something that not just our group finds onerous, but it's the reason the model bylaw takes it out and makes it by right. So that a homeowner has the right and has the ability to take care of their situation and their livelihood and their, their home in a way that makes sense for them. So you know, I appreciate the last speaker's comments about having to live, having lived in other places and, and moved to idyllic Cape Cod, that I, I'm in a similar situation. And there are situation and circumstances that happen in a people's, in a person's life, it's unexpected. Divorce, aging, loss of job that makes it so that they need, need to find a way to stabilize their housing and their situation for them and their family. And it isn't for everybody. It is hard. Building an accessory dwelling unit is hard. It is expensive. That's why there's nothing to be afraid of. It's only going to be for people who want to make sure that they can protect their asset themselves. They're living on the property, or I was living on the property, so I have to make sure I have a good tenant. It's, it is a, a pathway to stability for, for both parties.
And to answer his question also about the last bylaw, if I remember correctly, it kept rent control in place. Which, as the speakers have talked about before, it is expensive to build one. And so you're not going to want to build one if you are capped on rent. And so the economics of building one just does not work with rent control in place. Additionally, I would say is, you know, for those that have said about single-family neighborhoods, this is not changing single-family neighborhoods. Under Massachusetts Building Code, you know, single-family household, a single-family house can have an accessory use. And, and this falls in line with that. So this keeps single-family neighborhoods intact.
Any, any other issues that you came up with? Those are the primary two or three?
Yes.
Okay, just thank you. I appreciate it. Just to, just to make a comment, I understand the issue with, with affordability. We have issues not just with people that want to own a home, but also for the businesses in town that, that need to have rentals. And we've done some special things this, this year just to make that available to, to some of the businesses, especially being a, being a vacation area, et cetera. So. But the one thing I would say too, as you mentioned before, that there is no, there's a, there is a requirement right now in the bylaws to, to go to the zoning board for a special permit if they want to do accessory apartments, whether they're family or affordable. It would be a logical place to fit this into with the same kind of constraints, just so it would be reviewed. And you know, it's, it's, it's very often that those are approved unless there's some unreasonable situation, which is outside of the norm. So I would suggest if anything that you, you continue to keep the special permit section and, and fit it in under that and work with the proposal which had been done a couple of years ago to try to make that work in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple of notes on that. If you do remove the special permit, it does require two-thirds majority of town meeting versus a simple majority vote as well. But additionally, I, I would say this is from that standpoint. We agree with you. The Yarmouth is making good strides. And like we said, putting all these pieces together is how you fit the housing puzzle. There's no, to, to the person earlier, there's no one magic bullet that's going to solve the problem.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Saban.
Could I ask that in the interest of fair and balanced, that we get an opportunity to hear from some of the people that are online as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I can't, I cannot see who's.
Jamie.
Do you see a name?
Like Jamie Carter?
Jamie Carter.
Hi, thank you. My name is Jamie Carter. I live on West Great Western Road in Yarmouth Port. Listening to the applause in the room, I, I can appreciate people wanting their neighborhoods to remain exactly as they like them with the architecture they approve of. But if you're all going to remain on Cape Cod, you're going to be affected at some point in a negative way if you end up voting this down. I'm a registered nurse and I currently work at Cape Cod Hospital. I also spent over a decade taking care of Yarmouth residents in their home. I was the owner of Lighthouse Home Healthcare of Cape Cod based in Yarmouth Port. And after selling that business, worked at the VNA of Cape Cod. One of the main reasons I sold my home care company was the fact that I could not find enough help to meet the demand of our Cape Cod seniors. Well before the pandemic, we neared crisis mode in regard to staffing home healthcare workers. I had several staff members quit due to needing to relocate off Cape as they could not find housing here. Many of us felt a major factor in this impending crisis was the baby boomer generation aging out. Many of that demographic lived off Cape and rented out their Cape houses, often to lower-earning healthcare workers. Upon retirement, they would sell off their Cape homes and move, they would sell their off-Cape homes and move into their Cape homes, fulfilling their retirement dreams. Unfortunately, living out this dream and apparently the dreams of the Hyannis Park residents hearing tonight, not only displaced the younger workers, but increased the demand for services by adding more seniors to our geographic area. The COVID pandemic pushed our healthcare staffing issues into full-blown crisis mode. We all know about the effects the pandemic has had on our housing market. And it's effectively pushed out an even larger segment of our healthcare workers here on Cape Cod. One of my best employees at Lighthouse was evicted because the landlords wanted to take advantage of the hot housing market and sell the house. She searched for over six months to try and find a rental and couldn't afford the ridiculous prices of the few homes she found. So now she is faced with pulling her kids out of the DY School District to move off Cape. That's one more home health aide just gone. I have a nurse friend who works at Elder Services and he told me there is a six-month waiting list for home care services through them. Six months. The VNA has had to limit their census due to the inability to hire staff and even Cape Cod Hospital staffing is struggling with a significant aid shortage. Our nurses are experiencing burnout from working so short-staffed. Even the VNA has been having difficulty hiring travel nurses due to there being no rentals available. Imagine it being your mom or dad who is not safe to be at home alone and you can't find help for them. So they end up having to move into a nursing home. And even there, there's not enough staff to answer their call bell when they need help. This is not a scare tactic. This is healthcare reality right here on Cape Cod. I get calls all the time with people asking me if I have any leads on home health aides. And my answer is always the same. There aren't any. There's no place for them to live. This is frightening. It's an incredible safety issue that scares the hell of me, the hell out of me and should be scary to all of us. I'm urging the planning board and everyone here at this meeting tonight to consider supporting this bylaw amendment. This will help ease the crisis, which is having a ripple effect on our senior and disabled population without causing any big density changes to our environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Tara Fergus Wallace.
Hello. Thank you, Alisa and Ryan, for that wonderful presentation. My name is Tara. I'm a Yarmouth resident, a recent Yarmouth resident, and I am here in support of the citizens petition to update the ADU by law. Recently, having struggled with having to leave my home of eleven years when my landlord decided to sell, it took me months, several months to find the unit that, the rental that I'm in now in Yarmouth, I'm now in Yarmouth Port. And you know, that was really, really scary. At one point, I didn't think I was going to be able to stay on Cape. And I'm a, you know, a professional in the community. I run a local nonprofit. And currently, it's just me and my husband in this, in this current rental and we are having a hard time affording it. I mean, we were lucky to find something on Cape Cod. I'm very grateful for, for having found this rental. But it's, it's, we're overhoused. We're actually in a rental that's a lot more space and bigger than we need and we're paying way more than we can afford. Or we're struggling to make ends meet. So would have been great to have something like an ADU available for us, you know, something more affordable and more, more easily accessible and leaving something of this nature, this, this large of a unit to a larger family. And that's pretty much it. I'm, I'm just here to, to support fully the update of the ADU by law. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Christina Bologna.
Yes, good, good evening. Thank you so much. I echo Tara's thanks to Ryan and Alisa for the wonderful presentation. I am speaking in support of the ADU by law. I, I just wanted to bring up several points. One, I, I grew up here on the Cape. I grew up in Harwich. My parents are still homeowners in Harwich. And actually, my father does have a trust. He owns his house as well as the house across the street from him, which he rents out at market rate to a young, a young man who is in the marine trades. And both of those properties are in trust to stay in the family. So just for, for all of the, the conversation about, about trusts and LLCs and all that, I'm not an attorney, so I, I don't know all of the ins and outs there, but I just wanted to bring that up. I currently live in Yarmouth Port off of Six A, close to the village. And as I said, I grew up here. I moved off Cape for a little while. And as is the story of many people in my generation, was fortunate enough to move back. I've been back on the Cape for eleven years. I am the vice president of Community Relations at the Cooperative Bank of Cape Cod. I'm incredibly involved in the community. I serve on several nonprofit boards. And I, I have to say full honesty, I'm, I'm very discouraged by the response to this bylaw this evening. I, I don't see it as anything other than NIMBYism. I, I hear a lot, we know there's a housing crisis, but, and, and everything that we're trying to do to solve this, even if it is these little pieces is shot down. And you know, for those of us who live and work here and, and grew up here or are young professionals, it's, it's really challenging. I make a decent salary. I make a good salary. And it's still a struggle. Three years ago, my housing situation changed and I needed to find a new place to live. I, as I said, I make a good salary. I have a really good credit score. I'm very well-connected in the community and it took me months and months to find the place I'm in now, which I'm very, very grateful for. I found it by talking to a friend of a friend, which is a very common story here on the Cape. And yeah, I'm here now. I've been here for three years. I absolutely love it. But if my landlord ever decided to sell, I would not be able to afford to live here. I also wanted to address this concept of, of homeownership and renting. It, it's not everyone's American dream to own a home. I, that personally is not mine, especially single-family homes, which is almost all we have available here on the Cape. It's just not sustainable for me or for a lot of people. And so having one or two bedroom units available, having more of them available is so needed. You know, I, I, as I said, I, I love my life here on the Cape. If I were to have to move off Cape, I would be devastated. This is my home. This is my community. And I just would really challenge everyone to think about it from a different perspective. You know, I, I think if you bought your house, you know, twenty, thirty, fifty years ago, when it was affordable, where you could afford to buy a house and live comfortably on the Cape, it might be hard to put yourself in the shoes of those of us who are not there and probably will never be there. The thought of purchasing a house, even if I wanted to, would be completely unattainable for me here on the Cape and probably even directly off Cape. So and then, and then I did also want to address, someone brought up something about you know, having an ocean view blocked by, by a neighbor building like a two-story ADU. And, and I do want to bring attention to the fact that this bylot, it would only be nine hundred square, a max of nine hundred square feet and only one or two bedrooms. So again, it's been said many times tonight, but more people on that lot would not be allowed than what is currently allowed according to septic sewage, whatever. So I, I highly doubt that people would be building a two-story building in their backyard if they could, if they had space for that. And I just, yeah, I mean, that, I don't know. We're renters, we're not drug dealers, we're not deviants. As I said, I'm a vice president. As I said, I'm a vice president at a local bank. I, I and, and the majority of the places that I've rented here on Cape have been ADUs. They've been illegal. I've learned about them from friends of friends. And honestly, that's probably still happening here in town and you don't even know about it. This would just make it legal and accessible for more people. So we're not we're, we're professionals working in the community, providing services for the community. And you know, thinking that we're going to be causing so much commotion in these local neighborhoods is really just very far fetched in my mind. So as I said, I would just challenge everyone to be open minded about that. And to realize that there's a whole population of people here on the Cape, providing services who can't afford to live here. I don't know if anyone's tried to go off Cape recently. It used to be once we hit the off season, you could go on and off fairly easily and it's, the traffic is there all the time because of the amount of people who have had to move off Cape and now have to commute back on. But people aren't going to commute onto the Cape for $15 an hour or you know, $20 an hour to drive like two hours to the lower outer Cape. So it just really needs to be thinking about these things. There are so many other layers beyond just housing crisis. It's a domino effect. It affects all of our lives. I could go on and on. I'm, I'm feeling really passionate, but I'm going to end there and just thank you so much for, for hearing me.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Can we have some water? Christina, are you finished? I think we, I think you've made your point.
Yeah, I'm finished. Yes.
Thank you. Who's next, Will?
Uh, let's see. Maureen Ryan.
Maureen Ryan.
Yes. Hi, I'm Maureen Ryan. I'm on Newbury Street in Hyannis, I mean, in, in West Yarmouth. And I'm a member of the Hyannis Park Civic Association. I live in a neighborhood with very small cottages on small lots. And what I've heard tonight is a lot about the kinds of money that can be made by real estate investors because LLCs would be allowed and Realtors. But how it would degrade and negatively impact the quality of life on the Cape and particularly in my neighborhood. We all agree that there is a housing crisis. We all agree that there's a national housing crisis, but it's also in cities and it's also on the Cape. I've not seen the town of Yarmouth take the kind of action in building of multi-family units or apartment buildings that are already possible in the corridors like Route 28 and Main Street. When I go down Main Street, there's so many buildings there that are abandoned, that, that haven't had any kind of businesses there or anything. It would be perfect to turn those into apartment buildings so that people would have housing. I think everybody wants people to be able to easily get housing and live in the place that they wish to live. And, and enjoy the kind of quality of life that we currently have. But there is so much here that is going to destroy that kind of quality of life due to the fact that it's, there's no by right. There's no going to be any kind of zoning oversight in certain circumstances. And so that is really a problem. Additionally, the physical environment of the Cape that we all love so much will be degraded. The septic systems will be increased. The amount of people who are on small lots will be increased. And that will have a negative effect as well. So I see this as something that takes off the few guardrails that we do have. And as I heard said, it still allows the things that are already allowed now. It just has less oversight. And so I would say that this needs to be taken a look at. This needs to be slowed down so that more information is given, more specificity is given, so we understand exactly what it is. And lastly, I'll just say that I have a, have a two story, 588 square foot house that I live in. And yes, you can have 900 square feet and have it be two stories and have it be two bedrooms because I live in something that's smaller than that. So I just wanted to say that we all need to work together on this and nobody's demonizing anybody else. But this is not the solution. I wish there were other things that the town of Yarmouth was currently doing that would point us in a direction that we get more housing for more people faster. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Tara Van Delger.
I think I said that right.
Kate.
Kate, sorry.
Kate Van Gelder.
That's okay. My name's Caitlin Van Gelder. I'm a homeowner and year round resident of Skipper Lane in Yarmouth Port. And I wanted to speak in support of the A D U by law improvements. My husband and I have discussed adding an A D U to our house. We have the space and setup that could allow for it. We have a three bedroom home. We only use two bedrooms. We only have one child. We have a walkout partially finished basement. So remodeling and renting our basement as a one or even two bedroom wouldn't change anything about the intended use of our home or septic. Renting to one or two people isn't any worse environmentally than me having two or three more children to fill the rooms in my house. And let's be honest, that would be way more annoying to my butters. When my husband and I have, have talked about, you know, whether we want to do the A D U, we do need to see the process become easier and more financially beneficial to us as homeowners, as kind as we would like to be. It's just the fact. I think the proposed by law changes accomplish this. And for example, we have talked specifically about wanting to form some sort of corporation or trust to ensure that the finances as a landlord will remain separate from our personal and already existing business finances. And I would very kindly suggest that people who are worried about how landlords as LLCs handle their rentals or set rental rates need to look at advocating for more regulations on landlords in general, which I would support. I hope these changes would encourage others to also add ADUs to their property. Especially summer residents looking to subsidize their second mortgages. My neighborhood is empty all winter. I grew up on Cape. I would love for my daughter to have a neighborhood more like the one where I grew up with trusted neighbors and even other children living here year round. My husband and I feel so lucky that we had privilege and timing on our side when we became homeowners. And we know we'd be unlikely to become homeowners now if we were trying to do so for the first time. There isn't an easy fix for the housing crisis, but it is a crisis and it needs to be addressed now. I hope that increasing available housing through ADUs will help alleviate some of the most immediate problems and help Cape Codders stay here while we find other solutions as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Caitlin. Is there anyone else? No other hand raised? Okay. Any other, any other comments from members of the in attendance here? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Greg Bilzekian. I own several businesses here in Yarmouth. I employ probably over 50 people in the town. The employees, we don't have enough of them and they're having a hard time finding places to live. My youngest daughter and her boyfriend run Camp Burgess in Sandwich. They can't find places for their J one people to live. It's, so you know, a Yarmouth issue, but there is a problem all over the Cape and it's a huge issue for young people and families and people who work in. I mean, I employ landscapers, cooks, cashiers, truck drivers, oystermen, waitresses, secretaries, people who do business, business sales. You know, they have an equity issue. They can't sell their houses. There's, you know, they, they have so much equity, but they have no place to go. Their kids have no place to buy and these are really huge issues. This is a small token in what the Cape could, Yarmouth could do to help some of these folks have a place to live. And it is accessible, excuse me, accessible housing, not affordable housing. You know, we're talking about housing that people who make a wage work can afford. Not low income housing and that's a, it is an issue and the town needs to address it. And it's not going to be, it's going to be little things like this that will make a difference. It's not going to be one big boom and we're not going to be able to build, there's only but 13% more land in all the Cape Cod that can be developed. So we're not going to find all of this land someplace. So we do need to look at these opportunities seriously. And this is a step in the right direction to help people who have, you know, affordable wages. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I'd like to now return to comments or questions from members of the planning board.
Do you want me to read the written comments?
Oh, I'm sorry, Kathy. Thank you. Thank you.
No worries. We did receive some comments in favor from Chris George. He's in favor to create housing, generate income, make legal building improvements and support the wider economy. A comment from Jennifer Hicks to make it easier to create an A D U on her two acre property to help the housing crisis. We did get a comment from Greg Bilzekian, but he spoke this evening. As well as the housing to protect Cape Cod and Sarah Coles, which has already been addressed. Some comments that we received that were against the citizens petition is from attorney David Reed. He commented on the no minimum lot size, no requirement that the owner reside in one of the units, which he felt was important. Otherwise, it's merely a two family rental property, no provisions for special permit if an A D U added to an existing nonconforming structure. No provision for number of parking spaces for A D U increases allowable size by 100 square feet from what we have now. And suggested a better approach might be to amend the existing by law. Another comment from Kathy Di Trupano commented that only one public meeting around this issue is insufficient and noted that Dennis spent two and a half years on their A D U by law. Need more meetings with diverse groups of stakeholders. Concerns about the lasting impacts to our neighborhoods, doubling the density requires more parking and need a study and careful analysis before making changes. Chris Greeley did send in a separate one, but I believe that Tom Sullivan read her statement. Brian Hunt. He was not. He felt that the cons outweigh the pros, noting impacts on town services, water, septic, police, fire. And the septic systems due to increased people. We have enforcement issues now. Regardless of ordinances, people park all over the streets, concerns about noise, privacy with increased units on small lots, increased congestion, potential for overdevelopment, overbuilding and overcrowding of the neighborhoods. Received the Hyannis Park Civic Association comment that Linda, Linda summarized. We have another comment from David Bernstein. He said, he said he was not against the ADUs per se, but feels we need more discussion and more of a process to finalize the rules. He almost commented, he also commented in general on concerns about housing and traffic on Route 28. Another comment from Judith Warren. She felt that the citizens petition failed to address the need of the towns and the resulting increase to resident, residential population. No details were offered on impacts to resources of the town or other rules and regulations changes that may be required. Concerns about altering the, the nature and intent of Yarmouth neighborhoods. Need more work to develop a plan for administering permitting, regulating ADUs with limited resources. Another comment from Robert Carr. He felt that unrestricted ADUs will harm our children for generations. Greater burden on education system, the tower struggles with sewer issues now. The A D U issue will overburden septic systems, impact traffic, our environment, increase global warming and impact town services such as water, healthcare, police, fire and E M Ts noted adverse impact on individual property rights and single family neighborhoods. He had a comment from Janice Burke. She noted increased traffic congestion and adding unsightly density to neighborhoods. Impacts to water supply, noting the current drought and septic issues. Another comment from Kathy Campbell. Many questions about the need that need to be answered before allowing the changes. I felt that wastewater should be the primary town focus and should put a pause on changes to current bylaws until wastewater is completed. And last written comment was from Jeff O'Hare noted that the by law allows for a general disregard for sense of community that our homeowners invested in. Overuse of housing resources creates need for additional municipal resources that fall on tax base. Need to think through long-term effects. Suggested we stop overbuilding to protect our water resources and suggested limiting and stopping nitrate uses in fertilizers.
Thank you, Kathy. So now I'd like to go to planning board members with any comments or questions. Who would like to start? Susan, Susan Britta.
Last word a few minutes ago. You know, as I listened to the discussion today, I think it breaks down into just two big categories. One was process and the other is the substance. The actual elements of the amendment as well as the process. And, and in my mind, there has been no there's not, there's been no public outreach. I don't know of any homeowners association or civic association other than the advocates that have been involved in discussing this issue. I don't know of anyone that they've actually reached out to and said, what do you think about this before they brought it forward? And for those of you that were, were involved in the issue back in 2019, that was also one of the criticisms and we made that mistake back in 2019, the town did. We did not do enough outreach to the civic associations and the, we, we heard about it at the town meeting. For this to be successful, when I say this, I mean the application of ADUs, if we decide to, to do a whole new one or tweak what we have, you have to have the involvement of the citizens. They have to be involved. They're going to live with it. They're going to enforce it or not enforce it. They're going to have, that's going to impact on their. I think one of the presenters used the word asset. For many of you, for most of us, our home is our single biggest asset. We have, we saved, we as, as the representative from the Civic Hyannis Park Association said, you know, for many of us, it is the, it is the American dream. And living in a suburb, living in a residential neighborhood, and this will definitely impact on that dream. And therefore you need to talk to the people that are going to be, have, have, you know, that will be impacted. You cannot in the 21st century, roll these kinds of things through towns anymore and think the people are going to accept it. That's not the way we operate anymore. People have to get involved. I think an educated citizenry is the town's biggest asset. And the more we educate our citizens, the more they get involved, the better the outcome will be. Then there's the substance. I have exception with virtually everything in the substance, but that's that, those things can be worked out. Those things can be compromised. For example, the size of the lot. Our current by law, Kathy, I think it's 10,000 square feet. I would up that to 15,000, quite frankly, and make it consistent with Dennis. Dennis took two and a half years of monthly meetings, not only in an internal group, but they invited architects, they invited real estate people, they invited builders and contractors. The police, the fire, the health people, all in to participate in the conversation and it took them two and a half years. Yarmouth should engage in such a thoughtful process because we will get a terrific outcome if we do. And I think it's my knowledge of ADUs is not positive. I, there was an article last year in the New York Times about a town in California that was taken over by LLCs. They, one of the presenters talked about someone rolling, buying everything in sight and turning around and doubling the size and turning around and renting it. It became a town of renters as opposed to a, a, you know, a town that people wanted to live in and enjoy living in. Those are the things that we have to consider. We have to think about. We have to get citizen input. We have to get expert input. We're not experts on, on stuff like that and urban planning and things like that. And yet this A D U concept may have a role to play in the larger housing picture of Yarmouth. In January, the housing group sponsored, I think Mary, if Mary still, I think it was called like a housing summit. One of the notions that we discussed at that housing summit was how do these various, whether it's affordable housing, section eight, ADUs, rental construct, how does it all fit into a larger picture of housing in the town of Yarmouth? And what do we want it to look like? We don't want the tail wagging the dog. We want a comprehensive snapshot and that's what the, I guess, the comprehensive housing plan is all about. And Mary has sent an email, a memo actually to Joanne Crowley.
I did not read that. I'm sorry. I did miss that.
Said that they are going to be looking at putting together a working group of the housing trust, the affordable people, the planning board and interested citizens to examine this issue and come up with a better approach, something that we can all buy into and benefit from. We all, you know, we, we all have to compromise. We're not going to get everything we want. But we, we can come up with something that we can live with. I, I cannot live with this without knowing what my neighbor thinks about it. You need to be involved. You may not want to get involved, but you have to be involved. And you, and if you don't get involved, you can't come back and criticize us. You have to get involved. You have to make your opinions known. You have to work with the group. And I do think we can come up with something if we, if we decide to proceed with an A D U, either amend what we have or come up with something brand new. But it will, won't be successful unless we get the citizens involved. And that was my single bit of criticism of this process is that other than the advocates, no one was briefed on it. That's not the way we should be operating in the town of Yarmouth. So those are my comments. To say nothing of the substance, but the process to me is everything. With a good process, you'll get a good outcome.
Thank you, Susan. Yes.
I'm sorry. I did forget to read Mary's memo that I received late this afternoon. She was here, but unfortunately had to leave and I told her I would read it into the record. I apologize. She indicated that for over 15 years, I have assisted Yarmouth homeowners to create affordable accessory apartments in Yarmouth. The current affordable accessory apartment by law and program was designed to create safe and decent rental units with the public benefit of serving low income renters with an affordable rent. It was further designed such that these apartments would count towards the town 10% affordable housing goal. The Affordable Accessory Apartment Program initially generated nine actual affordable accessory apartments. Currently two affordable apartments are
Currently, two affordable apartments are functioning accessory units. Almost all of the units involve some waiver requirements, and thus we're not eligible for inclusion on the town's affordable housing inventory. However, one of the biggest accomplishments of the program was to bring existing accessory apartments, which were created without the benefit of a building permit, up to code. After this was accomplished, the interest in Affordable Accessory Apartment Program dropped significantly. The Yarmouth Housing, Community Housing Committee is currently updating its housing production plan. One of the action items identified in the plan is for the Community Housing Committee, the Affordable Housing Trust and the Planning Board to work together to update the Affordable Accessory Bylaw to make it easier to use. I propose we stick to the plan and convene these three groups along with interested residents to modify the accessory apartment by law.
Thank you, Kathy. Returning to planning board members, comments? Who's next?
Jim, do you want to go or do you want me to jump?
I'll go, you can go ahead, Mr. Goodwin.
Okay.
I'd like to hold my comments to last, please.
Oh, boy. Thank you for all for coming out tonight and speaking on whatever side of the, the argument you have. And again, this is going to go to town meeting whether we vote, however we vote, because it's a petitioned article, so it slides right through. We're not gatekeepers. We're trying to add a little bit of wisdom to it, but we're not gatekeepers. I am split right down the middle, and I'm not trying to waffle. I work for iHeart Media. We do businesses, WCOD and other radio stations, and we've had a position available for $75,000 a year for a news position, and we've had people apply from all over the country. And yet they come here with their, their other half, their better partner, or whatever you want to, however you want to phrase him or her or they, and they can't find a place to live. So the position has gone open, unfilled. I get it. Conversely, we have a lot of neighborhoods that if they were built under today's zoning law, wouldn't be built. They're teeny tiny lots. Many of the people have come before us here tonight from Hyannis Park West, up and down stretches of 28, and I shudder to think about an ADU being there if it's, if it's next door or adjacent and not underneath or above, you know, an attic or a basement type setting. The one thing that comes to mind though is perfect communism, and I'm not trying to be flippant. Perfect communism would work well all over the world, but it's not perfect. It breaks down. Yarmouth has a problem right now staffing town hall. This bylaw that goes through is going to need at least another health official and another building official, and I don't see that being funded by this bylaw. I see people doing what they do best, which is skirt the system. The way we came up with SUVs by Detroit is they had to get around the minimum requirement for miles per gallon, and so they built a larger vehicle on a smaller chassis and they got around it. It worked, and America's fell in love with SUVs. If I have a four bedroom house and I want to nudge, nudge, wink, wink, get rid of two bedrooms and then build my ADU, there's a good chance I may open up another bedroom. And the town of Yarmouth is never going to find out, or I'll do my darndest to make sure the town of Yarmouth never finds out. So the idea of neutral on paper is true. I take down my two bedrooms, I build an ADU, two bedrooms, it's neutral. Septic doesn't go up. Maybe parking goes up a little bit because of the other person has a car where my child who's moved out doesn't, didn't have one. I get that, but to say it's neutral is not, not true. At least on paper it is. In reality, it's not. And there's a line, excuse my glasses, my eyes are going, it's late. There's a line in the petition article, Title V and Border Health Regulations on or if on municipal sewer shall be certified by Department of Public Works for adequate passing to serve the additional unit. Again, additional unit. It's not, it's not the same unit. It's additional units being built. And I know I'm splitting hairs, but it's not going to. It may pass if what you said tonight is true, that Mr. Seer changed the rules from two thirds to only a simple majority, which I think is a, not a good way to run a major change in any town, just like this filibustering in the House and Senate in Washington DC and up on Capitol Hill. So any major development needs a full 60 plus votes to get through. But that being said, I don't see this being viable unless you come up with a way to increase the lot, minimum lot size so that those small outdated lots built in the 50s and 60s don't have the ADU accessibility aspect, or they go through the ZBA. And number two, you find some way when you're funding this or creating this, that you allow the town of Yarmouth to get some dollars and cents to fund another building inspector and another health inspector so that maybe this ADU will be the bright shining star we think it is on paper. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Saban, I think you want to be next.
Why don't you be last?
I'll yield to Will first.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for yielding. You know how to respond to that.
He'll yield his minutes to you.
I guess. Thanks to everybody who came out tonight. What I find most interesting about this whole conversation is that I am generationally in the middle. I am almost 50 years old. I am a father of two children. I am a homeowner, I'm a business owner, so I'm not a young person who wants to find their first rental or their first home. I'm also not quite in the phase where I might have my house already paid off, and I'm starting to think in a different kind of way. And so it is really challenging to consider all the different nuances of this particular article because of where I just am in my life. And I agree with Susan that I wish this process had not been so rushed to get this article in front of us in the way it has now appeared. At the same time, I'm also getting impatient. I'm getting impatient because there are lots of little ways that we can create. I'm not, I can't use the word solutions because there is no such thing as a solution. There are lots of ways that we can create tools to help people, especially a little bit younger than myself, stay on Cape Cod. My biggest concern amongst others is, as was evidenced earlier in the night when we heard someone who used to own a home health aid business, is who are going to take care of all of you? I cannot not think about that as someone who is not yet 50 years old, is as someone who also employs 100 people in the summer and about 12 people year round. I have similar struggles as to Mr. Bilzikian about how to run my business and keep our business going, and that's hiring people of a certain status and a certain wage who may or may not be able to afford to live here. So I am also struggling with the fact that as the town of Yarmouth is a beautiful mosaic of neighborhoods. I've heard so much from a very passionate neighborhood, and I can respect that given the layout of Hyannis Park, that this issue is very much right in front of your face and it's white hot. However, the town of Yarmouth is not just your neighborhood. The town of Yarmouth is also what's north of Route 6. It's also what's west of Route, you know, southwest of Route 6. There are just lots of little pockets that feel passionately one way or the other. So I guess that's a roundabout way of saying that what we need, I believe, are more tools to help more people live in Yarmouth. And I believe that this is one of those tools. However, it is not a perfect tool. It may or may not pass a town meeting, and as Brad already discussed earlier tonight, unless the petition is withdrawn, this whole discussion that we've had tonight is going to be replayed to some extent in a month. So regardless of how you feel about the way that we got here, we all certainly agree that we are in the middle of a housing crisis. So as evidenced earlier, on October 25th, there is a meeting that, to discuss the Yarmouth Housing Production Plan, of which hopefully something like this is a part of, as Brad's work on the Affordable Housing Trust is a part of, some of the things that we will hopefully get to discuss tonight involving the WCOD amendment to the, at town meeting are a part of. And so it isn't simple, is it? It's really yucky and really kind of complicated and really kind of depends on whether you're 49 and three quarters or 28 or 75 years old. It isn't simple, and I understand that I'm probably saying things that you already know depending on who you are. So my inclination is to support this amendment. It isn't, that doesn't mean I love it. That doesn't mean I'm jumping up and doing cartwheels and like applauding it. At the same time, how many more people are going to be forced to leave our town? How many more people are going to be forced to leave Cape Cod until something actually, even if it's small, as evidenced earlier, the number of units that may or may not be produced is probably in the teens, perhaps at the most per year? How many more people are going to be lost until we finally get around to doing something? And are those going to be the people that we're going to take care of you or serve you food or cut your lawn or work in your business? Because there are just fewer and fewer and fewer of those nice people. And so I look forward to the conversation that we're going to have in a month, and I hope for all of you, and certainly dare I say hundreds more, that will show up in November. I just want to also point out that a dark November night is no different than a dark May night. So I don't appreciate that thought at all. Town meetings are usually, well, except for that one when we were outside and got rained on, but that's another conversation. I, I do, I just want to, I guess I've said it enough, so I'll start to wrap it up. This is hard. This is really hard, and I can totally understand why there are folks who live in certain parts of our town that, that are as concerned and as scared and as upset as they have already discussed. However, in my case, I am in support of it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions I'd like to just get some clarification on. In the, in the petitioned article, you say that the principal dwelling may be rented for periods not shorter than 12 months. Do you mean that they must be rented for 12 months?
When rented, it must be for a period of no more than 12 months, or no less than 12 months. Because what if you don't have a renter? Because the issue, Joanne, is what if you don't have a renter in it for three months? And so if you're saying it must be rented for a period of more than 12 months, then you'd be in violation because you didn't have a renter at the time. And so when it's rented, it must be rented for a period of 12 months.
So when it, so what, when it's rented, if you were to build an ADU and you were to have your daughter live in it, you may not, they not be, they may not be a tenant. You might not, might technically not be a rental. It might be a single family home that you have your, your daughter and her family in one side and you in one side, then it's not a rental. But if you decide to rent it to a stranger or to someone else, then it has to be a 12 month rental.
So it must be a 12 month lease?
Exactly. If, if you decide to rent it, yes. If it's a family member and you're not technically renting it and having a lease and collecting rent, right, then it, then it's not a rental.
Correct.
Right. I'm just, that, that's the clarification that he's saying is when rented, if it were to be rented, it needs to be a 12 month lease.
Okay. But the, again, I'm not a lawyer. I'm not a lawyer, but it says May, so that's not what the article says. That's not how I read it. That's not what the article says. Also, you specify only weekly or daily basis. Does that mean they could be used for seasonal or short term rentals?
No.
Again, it doesn't say that. My concern is-
Well, yes, because it just says the 12 month lease, so it does.
Those are prohibited.
It should be included. It should be included in that paragraph also.
Okay.
Those are prohibited from any use as rental units on a weekly or daily basis. Last sentence of the paragraph.
Madam Chair, if there are amendments that would make you recommend this, I would, I would encourage you to propose them over the next week and, and vote on that if there is amendments you'd make that would make you support this.
Hold on. I, excuse, I just, I understand it says weekly or daily. It doesn't say anything about short term rentals, and it does not have the word seasonal. My, it's a simple question.
Sorry about that.
Does, does it mean that they could be used for seasonal or short term rentals? It's an easy yes or no.
Yeah, we do support seasonal rentals, and I understand what you're saying. We will clarify.
My only point is, again, I'm going to, it being a zoning bylaw, I'm all about process. I apologize. I've grown up as a bureaucrat. My entire life has been a bureaucrat.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, you asked us to say yes or no. We are saying no. It does not allow that.
I understand what your intent is, but that's not what is real.
But that's not what you just asked us. You just asked us to answer yes or no, and we answered no.
I understand that, and my point is, my, I really don't want to be confrontational, but my point is the language that you have for the warrant is important, and it doesn't say that.
I hear you. Thank you.
My other, my other comment is, is the intent of the, of the petition to replace section 407 in its entirety, and, and this would now become the accessory dwelling unit section in the zoning bylaw?
I believe that it is an additional bylaw.
Additional. Again, my, my, my comment would be it doesn't say that, and I don't know what Article 4 is, I apologize. At the heading, at the heading of the, I don't know what that is. Section 407 is the accessory apartment section of the, of the existing zoning bylaw, and my question is whether or not that gets removed and this replaces it.
This is not, we wanted to provide more. You asked a question, I'm going to respond. This does not replace it, this gives homeowners additional options. If they wanted to use the accessory apartment bylaw, they would be allowed to.
So it's additional.
So we would have two.
You have, you have multiple options for homeowners to serve their needs.
I, I understand. So this would be a new section of the bylaw. Do I, do I have that understanding? Okay.
Yeah, if not, we'd have to strike and replace the other section.
Can you repeat it?
He said if not, we'd have to strike and replace the other section.
That's, well, that's, it's not clear to me that that was your intent, so you answered, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
There are also some, again, I apologize for being a bureaucrat, but there are some issues with the amendment, that the amendment is at cross purposes with numbers and sections in the existing one, if it's going to be in addition to it. There are certain references, I'll just use an example, reference to 813 should be A14. All of these very simple comments that I'm making are important from a process perspective because what is voted on is sent to the Attorney General as it sits. And without, and with, with my interpretation of these and the, and the process, I have some issues as to what the intent is. No one here is against ADUs, and I'm, I am not, I am not in that, I am not in that party. But I do have concerns about some representation, as an example, again, having attended the Board of Selectmen's meeting last evening, that 13 towns in the town, in the, in Cape Cod have accepted the Cape Cod Model ADU. I have from the Cape Cod Commission their matrix, and not one town has accepted the model ADU in its entirety, in all of its provisions as proposed by the Cape Cod Commission. Not one town. So I need to clarify for the public record that statement that 13 towns last evening, I believe, was said accommodate the, the commission's bylaw, that is simply not true. All of them have issues. All of them are unique, and I know you tried to tailor this to some degree. That is what a model does. You take it and you try to, it's like, it's like, much like taking a suit off the rack. No, no model or sample is likely to perfectly fit any alterations to take into account the unique circumstances of our own community. I mean, was, as an example, was there any consultation with town council?
Do you want me to answer that question?
Yes, please.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. I was asking a question. I apologize.
No, I just want to make sure. Not with Yarmouth's town council, no.
Thank you. I think that's all, all of my, all of my comments. Anyone else want to have any other comments? Jim, you haven't chimed in yet. Would you like to say anything now?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Yes, I have a number of comments I'd like to make. I've been jotting down notes left and right during the, the meeting, and I just want to share a few things. Let me start with, with the issue of, of costs and housing. And while we're discussing, having the discussion, and I apologize previously, I didn't have my mute button on, I asked my wonderful Siri what the median income for, in the town of Yarmouth is, and I found that the per capita income is 44,906. And I found that the per capita income is $44,968. I also went to my, oh, by the way, for, for the public, I'm a professional real estate appraiser. By residential real estate appraiser. And I will tell you that I am in houses every single day, although not now because of the broken leg. And I guarantee you, the people in Hyannis Park, some of you have accessory apartment units, and you're not telling anybody. I know because I've been in them. That's my point, is that these exist throughout our community. Many of them we don't even know. And I would defy any of you if I gave you 10 pictures and had you drive around town and look at those 10 properties. You can't tell me which ones are accessory unit by law, have accessory units legal or otherwise, and which ones don't. So the concerns about our. Character of our community, I, I think is unfounded. With regards to lot size, I think it needs to be clearly emphasized that this bylaw does not allow us to do any more than we could already do. So if you have a 10,000 square foot lot and you can't build an accessory unit today, or, or build a, better than that, a family room. Then you're not going to be able to build an accessory unit. It still goes through the same process. All of the protections that we have in our community are still there. This takes none of them away. Let me talk about by right. And with all due respect to my fellow board member, you are dead wrong. By right is nothing more than me having the right to control my own property rights. If something is zoned, is a permissible use, you, as a butters, have no right to tell me what to do. That's just the way it is. And if you don't think so, try wanting to do something in your own property and like what your neighbors tell you you can or can't do. There are existing rules. I live in historic district. I know I can't paint my house pink with red polka dots. There are rules. So if I want to paint it with pink and red polka dots, there's a process that I have to go through. So there are protections that we have built into our community to ensure that we are not going to have anything other than what's permissible. If it is not permissible, we have an, an element for that too. It's called the zoning board of appeals. So as, with regards to by right, it's nothing more than me having the right to do what I want on my property and not you telling me what to do because you don't own it. And if you want to do what you want on that property, I suggest you buy me out. And I'm sorry, that's just the cold hard facts about property rights. I want everybody to understand, this is not a subject of affordable housing. This is not an affordability bylaw. I spoke against this at, at the 2019 because it does restrict you. It tells you how much you could rent it for and who you could rent it to. And you could only have family members. Those are restrictive. I looked at the, you know, thank you for the cameraman for showing me the, the, the room. There's a lot of people my age and older in this room right now. And let me tell you, having spent the last six, six weeks with most of my time alone, it sure would have been nice to have an accessory unit where somebody could check in on me once in a while. To make sure that I hadn't died or something terrible. So accessory units give us the ability to age in place. So that's an important issue that we need to address in this town. Housing crisis is a great big apple pie, and I love apple pie, but I eat it one piece at a time. And we're going to solve the issue of crowded housing on Cape Cod. We need to eat it one piece at a time. Is this bylaw perfect? Absolutely not. But we can make some amendments, and I would suggest that members of our board, if you're concerned about some of the issues, whether it an A4 or an A10, or whatever the number might be. Let's give those to the, to the petitioners so that they can review them and possibly make amendments at town meeting, uh, uh, town meeting floor. The other thing I want to point out about, we're talking about giving it its due fair share of hearings. Let me remind you that in 2019, 18, and 17, you gave it fair hearings. And then when it was defeated, this town sat on it and ignored it for the last three and a half years. That's why we're here today, because the planning board has not acted on this in three years. So here we are today, people in the community recognize this is just as important as wastewater. It's just as important as building a school or building another DPW building or anything else. It's critical to our community that we act on this now. We can't keep waiting. We put these things off. We put these things off. NIMBYism? Absolutely. That's what I hear tonight. Not in my neighborhood. I don't want you to build one of those apartments in my neighborhood. I've been in your neighborhoods. I've been in every neighborhood in this town. You have them throughout this community. You don't even know it. So let's make them legal. Let's make it so people who are above the affordability rate. You know, the attorney's assistant, or better than that, your CNA who comes and takes care of you, or the person who mows your lawn, has a place to live. I grew up here. I've been here my entire life. There are parts of Hyannis Park that were vacant lots, and I learned to play baseball in, that you're living in today. The kids that grow up here today would love to be able to live in houses too. So let's get over the NIMBYism. Let's look at some of the issues that are objections. Let's work on it in the next couple of weeks, and if we can make some amendments at town meeting floor, let's do it. But we've got to get this done. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Saban, for your comments.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Before I forget, Chris Vincent did send in an email as a planning board representative, planning board member, and asked that it be read into the record?
Yes, that's the appropriate time to do it now, Kathy. Thank you.
He indicated I won't be able to attend the October 19th planning board meeting due to a scheduling conflict, so please accept these written comments instead regarding the petitioned ADU zoning article. Although I won't be there and able to vote, I ask that you read this into the record during the meeting. Number one, I am in favor of the increase of size from 800 to 900 square feet. This extra 100 square feet would make the space more appealing and comfortable for the renter. Number two, I'm opposed to the definition of owner being a corporation or LLC. An owner should instead be limited to an individual or a trust as it is in our current bylaw. I don't want corporations coming here and buying up homes just to rent them out. I prefer homeowners who live here and are vested in our town. Number three, the owner trust should occupy either the main house or the accessory, as is already the requirement in our existing accessory apartment bylaw, Section 407.2.9. After consideration of the three items above, I don't support the petitioned article as written. But I do think two simple amendments to our existing zoning bylaw 407 could serve both the purpose and intent section of this petitioned article and strengthen our existing bylaw. Number one, amend Section 407.2.7 to allow 900 square feet for accessory use. This would make the space more appealing, more comfortable, and thus more rentable. Number two, amend Section 407.2.1.2, which now significantly restricts the pool of potential renters by allowing a non-family member to occupy either the main house or accessory use. This would require a homeowner with no immediate family, the opportunity to rent out their space, helping both the homeowner and any potential renter. We should not penalize someone for having no immediate family available as a renter, regards Chris Vincent. If you don't mind, I, I just would like to make one quick comment.
Sure, certainly, Kathy.
I think one of the biggest differences in this bylaw is the ability to rent the ADU and the principal unit altogether. So you could, and also having the owner as a corporation or an LLC. So you could have investors come to town and take a small cottage, tear it down, build a larger home, and then build an accessory dwelling unit. There's no size limit. So there are some additional concerns with the way this is written, that it won't just be the typical examples that you've given where. She, she has created an affordable dwelling unit, and she's living in the house and renting to someone. This could be an investor's dream of coming down to Yarmouth, buying some houses, tearing down the small house that's there, and building something larger in an accessory dwelling unit, and then renting both of them out. So if you're going to consider some potential changes, I think some things that might make a lot of people feel better is getting rid of the corporations and the LLC. And allow, and requiring people to rent out either the ADU or the primary residence. When you get into owners and you're concerned about, you know, part-time people who are living in Florida. Well, if you can't rent that out and you want to come and live your part-time dear, that's fine, because you're the owner of that, and you're not renting out both of them. So those would just be, from what I'm hearing from people, the main concerns that are out there with this particular bylaw.
Kathy, if I may ask you, I, I know there is a lot of second homeowners that, you know, live in Wellesley, have a second home on the Cape. Who have their ownership in an LLC. It's not in a trust. It's in an LLC, right? There are people that actually live in their house year-round that have their ownership in an LLC and not a trust, for whatever reason, tax. And I, accounting, tax reasons, legal reasons, whatever it is. So are you telling me today that if I live in my own house and I have, and I'm a single-member LLC owner, and I own it in the LLC and I live in it? I cannot do the Affordable Accessory Apartment Program? I just wanted to clarify that question because that was a question that's come up through the process.
I think the number of people who actually have their homes in a trust is fairly common these days. I don't think it's particularly common that someone would have it in a corporation.
Yeah, a second, a second home, but it is very common.
Or limited liability. We can certainly check with assessing and see what that is. But how many people, by changing this, would you actually be impacting the ability to do an ADU versus maybe the potential of actually getting it passed at town?
Yeah, that's a, that's, to me, that's a boogeyman, to me, that's a boogeyman argument. That, that's, that's scary, right? The economics of housing on Cape Cod.
Or not, Brian, I'm just, I'm just making suggestions of potential changes that you might consider.
May I?
Yes, please.
Kathy, so if it had owner occupied, whether it was LLC or trust or whatever, would that, would that satisfy what you're, I, because I, I hear what you're saying. I, my house is an LLC, so this is why I know that it does actually happen, but.
I don't think it's that common.
It's not common, right, but it's for other reasons. So, and so I'm just trying to understand what you're solving for. And it sounds like you're solving for, I mean, and I, and we, I live in Orleans. We have, this, this comes up often of this idea of investors coming in, and they have two rentals and et cetera, et cetera. And then we're not, we're not really adding to the, the year-round housing stock, et cetera. So there's, we under, I understand where you're coming from. So I'm, I'm trying to understand, is the solution having it be owner occupied despite who, what the entity is that owns it? Or is it still the entity that owns it?
I think there's, there's two ways of, of getting at it, and obviously this requires more public input maybe on, on some of it. But I don't have any problem if, if you own a particular property and you go down to Florida. Maybe you even have residency in Florida.
Right.
But you own this property and you're the only one that lives in it. Maybe you live in it for four, five, six months out of the year. And then you have an ADU and you rent it, and you're renting that out year-round.
Right.
I do agree totally with Joanne. We do need to work a little bit on that language with regard to May. Versus mandatory and no, no short-term rentals, no seasonal rentals in those times. Sounds like those are the things that you are willing, wanted to be presenting, but maybe needed a little wordsmithing in the bylaw. So I, I think just that, and also the ADU or the principal dwelling unit could be rented, but not both.
Yeah, so, yeah, so Kathy, how Barnstable, Town of Barnstable addressed that was they said not both, both units could not be rented, right? And then that would solve the problem of the owner occupancy requirement. That would solve the problem of the LLC issue. That would solve that, because no one's going to buy a house in an LLC, build a ADU, and then leave the principal house vacant, right? And so the way, the way, and what I was talking, the Madam Chairwoman, who I've worked really well with before in the past, on the Community Economic Development Committee. Is my, I would say to you guys, if something like that would make you recommend this article, then bring it to us in the next week if you're not going to vote for another week. Let's have those discussions. If, if a simple zoning amendment would be that, is that you, not both properties could not be rented at the same time. If that would make you support it, let's have that conversation. You know, because I think we're here that, but we would not want to make that amendment without getting the recommendation of the planning board with that amendment.
Well, if, if I, if I may, I, I appreciate your interest in having us be involved. But that, that ship. Your petition is your petition.
It would be amended from the town meeting floor.
Amended from the town floor.
I agree, but if you, if your motion from the planning board next week was, we do not recommend this. And then another motion says we would recommend it. If this motion is adopted, then at town meeting floor, then, then there's, there's leeway there. And what I was saying is let's start that conversation. What we did this was to force the conversation.
I, I appreciate your interest in having a conversation. My opinion is that that ship sailed when you chose not to. You could have initiated this conversation long before you submitted something to the town clerk on, on August 31st. It was listed as September 7th is when we informally received a copy of it. And we formally received it as the board of, the planning board on September 28th. I, I feel compelled to not try to recreate a situation where we are now backpedaling. This ship has sailed on our involvement in trying to make this a possible petition article. Some members of the board are in favor of it, as it's written. And some of us are not. So I, I feel very strongly that what we see in front of us is what we will be voting on at our next meeting. You have right to make whatever amendments you want on the floor of town meeting, and I would encourage you to do so.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Consideration the comments that have been given here tonight, and maybe you can identify some amendments. And I would certainly be happy to look at those proposed amendments. The only other thing I would like to comment on before I know Jim wanted to talk was, where in your bylaw does this prohibit? The units from being condominiumized and sold separately? You talk about it all being the same lot under common ownership, but the individual in a condominium, it's the structures that, that, that are separate. The Model ADU bylaw had a provision about that indicating that they cannot be sold separately. So I was just curious as to whether.
I know that it was addressed, but I can't tell you where it is in the, the bylaw, right off the top of my-
We can have our attorney provide a letter for next week describing that situation.
Yeah.
I guess when I read it, there's nothing in there that tells me you can't condominiumize the structures.
Right. Kathy, like you said, we'll, we'll have our attorney respond in a legal way around why that's not allowed.
The, the other item is I know that the Board of Selectmen asked you last night to provide a redline copy of the model bylaw so that we can actually see the changes that you guys made. And, and that would be helpful to get, and, and we can provide it to the, to the planning board at the, at the next meeting. I, I understand Joanne's concern. We, we can't be scrambling to give you all the edits to zoning bylaw within such a short period of time. When this is something that we normally do over months and months and months. The same token, I, I know that there's some language in here that would be very troublesome. From a interpretation and a regulatory standpoint, if it were by chance to pass at town meeting. And I really think that we need to try to work together to fix the, the formatting of the language so that you are actually getting what you think you're getting, and we're getting what we think we're getting.
Yeah, and not, we're not creating more problems. Yes, yeah.
Interpretations later.
Yes, thank you.
So whatever you can provide that was requested by the Board of Selectmen. And, and Kathy has generously offered her limited time to try to help with some of these edits that may make it more acceptable to the Attorney General. And past regulatory muster, that will have it stand at town meeting. And essentially in the, in the format that it is now with some. Just one, one second. Mr. Saban?
Yes, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things. First of all, I apologize in my passion before, I neglected to point out the fact that the petitioners are housing experts. If you look at the names that signed this letter, these are not people who just woke up today and decided they'd want to do something about housing. These are our community experts. These are Cape Cod's experts on housing who have worked with us to put this together. Now, with regards to the comments about the bylaw adopted in all 13 communities. I, I recall the conversation last night, and it was said that versions of that, and not any of them to, exactly word for word. So I don't want you to think that they were trying to impress the community by saying that other towns have done the exact same bylaw. They use that as their, as their, as their blueprint.
Perhaps I misunderstood some part of it. That's what I thought I heard.
My last comment of this, Madam Chairman, is quite honestly, I'm taken back by your comments that says this ship has sailed. We are a volunteer community service that is provided in this town, and I find it distasteful to tell anybody that we're not going to work with them. This is something that's going to town meeting, and I think it is our responsibility to look at this bylaw. And if there are suggestions that we can make to the petitioner to make it better and palatable, then we should do so. And not take an attitude of, oh, well, this ship has sailed. I find that very inappropriate. We should never let the ship sail.
I appreciate your comments. Yes, Susan? Yes, Susan?
Just to add to the confusion, I, I am con- very concerned that the talents of a, of one of our town employees is going to be used to make their proposal more acceptable to the Attorney General when you've got a room full of people who are, are, are not in favor of it. So I'm really nervous about Kathy providing any kind of technical expertise. They have lawyers. Jim Saban just said they're the experts. I think every person in this room that owns a home is an expert. He said they're the experts. Let them go get their own lawyer and figure out how this should be changed so that, I agree with you. If they had wanted our input, they should have come to us last summer. Um, but they didn't. So I agree with you. I think the ship sailed and I am very nervous about Kathy providing her expertise to make their proposal better when we're supposed to be representing the people.
Madam Chairman? Madam Chairman?
Thank you, Susan.
Madam Chairman?
I, I'm going to let Kathy speak.
I guess I would just say is I also live in the town of Yarmouth. And this is a democracy and the people are going to come to town meeting and they're going to, to cast their vote. I don't want to cast the vote for something that I know moving forward is going to be problematic to enforce or administer, or could be something that we really, really would find unpalatable, like investment people coming down and buying and renting out too. I think that that would be a case where you would find a significantly more larger number of these actually happening versus I think maybe some of these smaller ADUs. Not everyone's going to want to be a landlord. Not everyone's going to want to spend a significant amount of money to build an accessory dwelling unit. But you may find that somebody has some spare room in their, in their structure that they can easily carve off and you probably won't even notice it. The concern I had is teardowns, build up mansions, and then putting in an ADU from corporations and investors who know how to do this kind of stuff. They do this all the time. They know they have the backing, they have the funding, they have the financing. Totally different than an individual homeowner wanting to build a small accessory dwelling unit. So I totally understand that, but if this got passed the way it is, I think we would all regret it versus Kathy spending. And I thank you, Joanne, because you know how busy I am and I don't have a lot of time. And I know you're trying to protect me and I very much appreciate it. But I feel like a little bit of effort on this. And, um, if it did pass at town meeting, you can still vote no on it. You can still vote no on it. But if the majority of people come out and it is a majority, it's not a super majority, uh, because it is, is a by right bylaw, um, then we have something that we can work with. We have a place to insert it in our zoning bylaw. We have the correct, um, you know, use reference number and all of those types of things, um, to do.
I would still say they're the applicant. The burden's on them, not on the town.
Madam Chairman?
Whatever, they, they are able to get passed.
Yeah.
Kathy, that's, that's the nature of the process. They're the applicant. They're supposed to come forward with a complete package. If, if, and you've, you've identified very legitimate concerns, they're the ones that are supposed to fix it.
Madam Chairman?
And what I suggested is that I would take a look at what they have and make sure that it's not causing more problems and is actually addressing the issues.
I don't think you need to do that. I don't think that's the job.
Mr. Saban?
I'm appalled by what I'm hearing, that we're being, telling our staff not to help our community. That is just ridiculous. When we come to our community, we look for guidance and help from our experts, whether they be the building department, the health department, the conservation department, or the planning department. So for us to tell people, sorry, you go to fight a petition, it's on you, is ridiculous. I think if we can present some information to the petitioners to help them, then we should. And it's not, shouldn't be an attitude of, well, it's on you. That's ridiculous. That's not how we operate as a town.
I- if I may, Mr. Saban?
While I'm still talking, that's not how we operate as a town. We work together to try to make things better and not say to people, oh, well, it's on you. That's ridiculous. I'm done.
Uh, Mr. Saban, I would appreciate, I would really appreciate if, um, your language that borders on ad hominem attacks would be, could be modified just a little bit. I would appreciate that a lot. We're all colleagues here.
Madam Chair, I've not, I've not insulted any individual. I'm stating that the comments are ridiculous.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? We have one member of the public that I would like your comment to be something different that we have not heard.
You got to come up. I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
And that it is regarding the.
Hi, I'm Jane Quinn. I live on, uh, Baxter Ave. And it is regarding the petition. When Mr. Saban was talking about that we don't say, um, you know, we are all helping each other. If Kathy's going to be sitting there and helping them write it so that it can pass, is Kathy also going to be helping the people that don't want it passed? Helping in the words that we need to use to make sure that it doesn't get passed?
It's a petitioned article. They don't have to make any amendments. You can also, at town meeting, make amendments to it. And if nobody wants me to work on it, I've got plenty of other things to work on.
So I'd like to get this, I would like to, right now, I'm, I'm, thank you. I appreciate that. Another comment, again, if it's different than what we've already heard. If it's the same, we appreciate, we, we need to move on here.
Stacy Ober, resident of Yarmouth. From a 60,000 foot view, I think where we're at this evening is a symptom of the larger issue, which was, uh, is there a mutual desire to work together on solving this problem? I think there is by virtue of seeing everyone that showed up tonight that wanted to be a part of the process and feeling some urgency or expediency to help tweak or fix or get the right citation, I think is leaving others feeling as though we too are asking to be part of the process. And, um, perhaps if it could move forward based on the feedback we've given this evening, without assistance from others to make it, uh, one way or the other, yes, the process, let's stick to the process. It might be helpful at this point for you to share with the folks in attendance exactly what the process is because I'm unclear, for instance, about making amendments from the floor, what that looks like, what's acceptable. Is there a timeframe where it has to be submitted in advance? And let those of us who feel there need to be changes move forward in that, in that regard.
I, I can, I can answer some of that with regard to, um, the petitioned article as written. Can be amended from the floor. The amendments have to be in writing, uh, and they are submitted to the town moderator. Um, and, uh, uh, all of the, uh, suggested changes that they might have, um, have to be presented in written form, uh, to the town moderator, uh, during the meeting. And then it is voted on.
Right. I, I would also suggest maybe talking to the town clerk who can give you some more guidance on, um, town meeting process.
Yeah. Any other, uh, any other comments? Um, I, I would just like to, uh, close. I, I really appreciate, um, the time and effort that, um, you have put into this. It obviously is, um, an important community issue. The balance that we have here with regard to Kathy's involvement or not is a very sensitive one. Um, there are, uh, clearly different points of view on this. Um, and where we decide to ask Kathy to help, um, obviously has some, um, has struck some nerves. Um, and so I would like to get the sentiment from the members of the board, uh, as to how we might, um, uh, want Kathy to be involved or not. I think, Susan, I know where you stand. Uh, I need to hear.
Out loud?
You did already.
No, but I don't, I risk to think it's inappropriate for a town employee to be, um, assisting in any way an applicant. We're supposed to be dealing at arm's length on, and so I, yes, I'm totally opposed to it.
Okay. Mr. Saban?
Madam Chairman, I'm fine with if this board has simple objections to certain parts of this, to express that directly to the applicant, the, to petitioners. As your example of the, a typographical error of some sort, why can't we work with them and say, this is a typographical error that's referring to something that doesn't exist? If we point that stuff out to them, then maybe they can create, correct their bylaw so that it's acceptable to all of us. But for us to say to them, no, you go figure it out on your own, that's just your way of saying, I don't want this to pass. And that's not the way we do business in town. Let's work together. So if we individually say, there's a fundamental flaw in your bylaw because it refers to something that doesn't exist, I think it's, it's our responsibility to point it out to them. And that's where Kathy's expertise comes in. So if we, as a, as a board, suggest what our objections are and Kathy gives them to them, it's up to them to do with it what they want, but I think it's our responsibility. It's like if you go to, you know, have the building inspector come out and tell you he, you failed your, your building inspection. And him saying, I'm not going to tell you why, you figure it out. That's not what we do. We say, these are our objections and we give them to them and let them figure out what to do with them.
Thank you, Mr. Saban.
Tell them we're not helping them.
Thank you, Mr. Saban. I, 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 I think you want Kathy to be involved. I'll, I'll take your sentiment as that. Um, I do believe that all of the comments, um, that have been made are recorded. Um, and that the petitioners, uh, will have access to all of the comments, including the very specific detailed comments that I made, that Kathy has made and that members of the public, um, have made as well. Um, I'd like to think that, that they are housing experts, as you've, as you have mentioned. Um, we appreciate that. I would like to think that we are zoning experts. Um, and I, I, I take our, our, our position as zoning experts very seriously. Um, we would like to help any petitioner, um, but there are certain sensitivities we need to be, we need to be, um, aware of. So I, I appreciate your comments. Um, Mr. Mr. Goodwin, your sentiments?
Uh-oh, you're muted, Brad.
You're muted.
We're going to make T-shirts.
You're muted, Brad?
Say, you're muted. Sorry.
He's still muted.
There we go.
Battery's going on this. Um, this is the first time in 28 years I've been asked this question. This is, this is unreal. Um, I'm going to have to side with Joe just for the simple reason that Kathy's overworked. And number two, when you petition an article, you come through a side door. You don't come through the front door, which is fine. That's the beauty of democracy. But you don't get access to everything that elected you get when you come through the front door. Uh, there are great attorneys in town. Uh, Paul Tardif, for one, has helped me and the planning board at times, uh, do some bylaws. I would suggest retaining, uh, Mr. Tardif. He's local, he's Yarmouth, he's well mannered, he's Brit, he's, uh, rich in knowledge and he could help you immensely. Uh, I would glean the comments that the chair and, uh, the planning director, uh, gave you off this video and go to work and you'll come through, uh, with shining colors. I, I really do. But I don't think you have the right to use the town planner. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Rubenstein?
Um, I think, I think our town of, our, sorry, I think our town staff are incredible problem solvers and I don't see this as any different. And to the extent that Kathy is physically able and in the work week that she can provide some assistance, I think it makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Okay, so I, I, I feel, I, I see that the majority of the board would prefer that you do not participate in any further discussions with the petitioner. Um, and that I, I would suggest the petitioner, um, uh, view the video very carefully and all of the written comments, which I believe we've, we've made available to them, Kathy?
Um, I, I do need to send them the ones that I received after the packet.
Yeah.
That was included on the town.
Yeah, we received some late today. We will make sure you get all of those, um, uh, as well. Uh, and with that, I'd like to, uh, have a motion.
Can I just ask one question?
Certainly.
If you're gonna, are, are we done? Yeah, I know you want to close the hearing and are we done accepting information? Or do we want to, in any way, shape or form, look at a revised amendment that they might consider proposing? Is it just a question to the, to the board, whether you want to close? Typically, they would collect the data, they could close the hearing and then they could deliberate and vote after that. But if you're going to be presenting something that may be modifying some of your, uh, votes or not votes, um, do you want to close the hearing? It's just a question.
I, 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 I believe I want to close the hearing. So may I have a motion to close the public hearing on citizen petition article number 23 and amendment to the zoning bylaw related to ADUs?
Second.
Any further discussion? I'll take a roll call vote.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have a quick, quick question. If we close this, uh, hearing, what does that mean with regards to the petitioner going back and tweak? Are you suggesting that if they go back and tweak it, they don't, we will have, make a decision without hearing any tweaks or is that?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Jim.
I'm not quite understanding the, the ramifications of closing the hearing.
It means that we will not have any more public comment with regard to the petitioner's amendment.
Including from the petitioner.
Including from the petitioner.
Does that mean, so that means when we just, uh, deliberate over this, we will not have an opportunity to hear from them any additional changes they may have been willing to make and amend at town meeting floor?
That is correct.
Okay. I don't, I vote in opposition to closing the meeting. I think we should give them an opportunity to, to, if they've heard these concerns, make, uh, suggestions for amendments at town meeting floor. And I think it's, uh, inappropriate of us to not give them the opportunity to be heard before we make this decision as to what they may change. So I vote no.
So, um, I, I understand that you would like to keep the public hearing open and, uh, continue it at our meeting on November 2nd?
That is correct, Madam Chairman.
Okay. All right, so again, roll call on this.
What is the motion?
The motion is to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Uh, and Mr. Saban has voted no. Mr. Rubenstein?
No.
Susan?
Yes, close it.
I vote to close the meeting.
Brad.
Um, I'm, unfortunately, I am going to say we should continue the hearing. And the reason is, we, I have just asked them to spend their own dollars to hire an attorney. I think we should hear with the results of that and have it brought back to us. So I vote no. Let's continue the hearing.
All right, so the motion, um, is, uh, is defeated. Uh, and we will continue the public.
You need a motion to continue.
Okay, the, uh, I may have a motion to continue the public hearing on citizen petition article 23 and amendment to the zoning bylaw related to ADUs to take place at our November 2nd, 2022.
Don't move, Madam Chair.
Just one second.
Motion.
Um, I, may I have, uh, may I have, uh?
Second.
Mr. Saban?
Discussion.
I just have a question through you to Kathy. Um, I still haven't had dinner and we still got a long way to go. Uh, do we have room on our November 2nd, uh, docket for this? Or should we make another meeting, uh?
We don't have time. It has to be done.
Sugar, that's right.
Has to be done.
All right.
Unfortunately, I guess we can discuss that later, whether we want to put off what we had on the second, uh, to another. Uh, we have a, a lengthy discussion there.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll discuss the calendar in just a few minutes.
All right.
Susan?
And I assume if the meeting's still open, the public can still come back and participate?
That's correct.
And, and present more information?
That's correct.
That's okay. Thank you.
Any other comments with regard to continuing the public hearing? A roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Saban?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mr. Rubenstein?
Aye.
Susan?
No.
Uh, and myself, yes. Okay, uh, we will see you all on November 2nd. Thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the comments. Thank you. I appreciate that. It's not always easy, my friend. Lots of differing opinions. Thank you. Yeah.
Go to the bathroom, sure. Yeah, I'm going to go through quickly on the rest.
I don't know, they mentioned it. I heard in November 2nd meeting, which is, uh, and then the town meeting, December 15th. And then your meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
That's the real subject. What is your date of that?
There was, um, I don't know who joined, but there was a man that was speaking about.
You're going downhill or downstairs?
Yeah. Uh, that was Jim Saban.
Ad hominem attacks just are not civil.
No.
They're just not civil.
I'm gonna get you boxing gloves and a headgear.
You didn't train me.
You did a great job. You did a great job.
I only watch you when I do that.
The mics are still on. Oh, phew, Brad was saying that they were.
They're still on.
Okay, well, Brad just...
I can hear you.
I just wanted to go to the bathroom. Hey, Larry, how are you?
I didn't realize you were in crunches, I saw you in the car.
Hi, good, how are you? We miss you on the board.
We're gonna get a boxing gloves and a headgear.
You could do congressional hearings now. Too insignificant to solve the problem and much too intrusive to rule a negative in the same, almost the same draft. It was like a little way.
Yeah.
You could do a congressional hearing. I can see a little kind of negative thing happening, but it's just people. But as this guy would point it out, the other speaker was Mr. Saban, who said, "I'm gonna rule a negative." You could get out of here, you wouldn't even know. But my sister-in-law ran a meeting fund, she said, "Why don't you..." Where are you going? Awesome. For how long? Oh, nice, where are you going? Oh, so no damage. Oh, good. Welcome back.
Yeah. Anyway. I was like this. Sort of like the same.
One of the people behind the counter had brought a couple of... They brought it out with the... Figure this out. But it was a commander, he was making a difference. So if this would be possible. He's... Where is Kathy? She's outside. There she is.
I think we're ready. Kathy? Isn't that common?
Kathy?
No, it's the Patriots. I didn't think so, but it required a lot of...
Start up again, Kathy. No, that's all right. How do you know what's on the agenda next?
Well, we just saved you hours worth of work.
You did, it was a good suggestion.
It's not even that, but it's very inappropriate. Why should they be using your expertise?
They're both great, they love to talk.
Why should they be using your expertise?
Continue. You have a memo from me?
Okay, so where is the agenda?
God, where's my memo? Okay. Thank you, guys. Thank you for coming.
I'd like to continue the planning board meeting. Next on our agenda is discussion of the Board of Selectmen meeting presentation on the VCOD bylaw amendment that I presented with the help of Kathy last evening to the Board of Selectmen. We presented Article 22 on Article 22 on VCOD, Amendments to the Board of Selectmen. Also, Board Member Jim Saban was in attendance, as was Will Rubenstein remotely. We also stayed for the presentation of the petitioner's ADU article. The presentation was essentially the same as we made at the public hearing. The board in particular, Selectwoman McGurran, asked that we reconsider some changes to Numbers 1 and Number 2 in the amendment related to two-family dwellings on the use regulation table under VCODs. This change could be made if we so want. Could be made on the floor of Town Meeting at the time of presentation of the article. They had no other concerns about the balance of the proposed changes except Selectman Smith did suggest a minor clarification with regard to FEMA flood zones.
Very passionate about that.
FEMA flood zones.
Passionate about the types of zones.
Yeah. Kathy, if you'd like to offer anything in addition there?
No, I think that's an excellent summary. I do believe that the FEMA flood zones are already defined in Section 403 of the zoning bylaw, and it talks about all of the different types, and it's actually a definition in there. I did present a... I don't know how the committee feels about this particular one, but I did draft, and unfortunately, I didn't send it out, so Brad doesn't have it, so I'm gonna have to read it, and Jim doesn't have it. At the October 18th Board of Selectmen meeting, the planning board presented their proposed zoning amendment related to the Village Centers Overlay District, VCOD, for inclusion on the November 15th Special Town Meeting warrant. At the Board of Selectmen meeting, a number of board members expressed concerns with the portion of the amendment allowing for duplexes as another multifamily housing type within the VCOD. There was concern that there would be a perception of increased density and that this may raise concerns and debate about an otherwise minor housekeeping zoning amendment. The Board of Selectmen asked the planning board to consider eliminating this portion of the amendment from the floor of Special Town Meeting. So if you should so choose, the planning board could... We could say we met and reviewed the Board of Selectmen comments and voted to move Article 22 at the Special Town Meeting with an amendment to remove Items 1 and 2 related to allowing duplexes in the VCOD. This will allow for the VCOD housekeeping items to move forward more efficiently at Special Town Meeting. This is a memo to the Board of Selectmen.
Yes, Susan?
Were both such... They both had to do with both the... I thought it was only mentioned once.
Yeah, but the second one is just merely a note.
Oh, okay.
It's simply a note, Note 41.
Changed the graph, I see.
That's correct.
Okay.
So it really is primarily about Number 1.
Okay.
The zoning use regulation table.
Did they indicate they wanted us to take that up as a separate or just not discuss it at all? Was there any kind of conversation?
There was a conversation. I think if it had been earlier, they would have recommended breaking it down into two separate articles. But because we are where we are, they had to... Last night, they had to vote on things. The only way we can do it is by an amendment from Town Meeting Floor of eliminating it. We can't add a whole nother separate article at Town Meeting Floor.
If we vote to eliminate, is that an idea we could take up as a board and bring back at the spring town meeting? If we think there's merit to it?
It can be revisited.
Coming from the board as opposed to... Okay, so that's...
Yes. Any discussion on Mr. Saban? Jim, are you there?
You're still muted, Jim.
I'm sorry about that. With regards to amendments at Town Meeting Floor, you can only make an amendment that I think is less restrictive than the bylaw. So I think if I'm correct, if we took it out, we couldn't add it... Well, we can't take it out now because it's already done, but we could amend it to take it out, but we couldn't make it more restrictive. And with regards to the duplex issue, I think it's two-part. A, I think we either take it out, or B, we do a much better job of explaining what that means. I think there's some misunderstanding that we're gonna allow regional avenue look of, you know, rows and rows of duplexes in the VCOD when I think really what we're trying to achieve is architectural flexibility as to how they would be able to build something that would, by density requirements... I think we're trying to prevent having, you know, an eight-building apartment, an eight-unit apartment building when we could easily have four two-bedroom, two-unit duplexes that would be aesthetically laid out on a site. And maybe I'm not explaining that to the best of my ability, but I think that's where the confusion in this is. And in order to achieve success on the rest of it, we might want to pull that at Town Meeting and look at that in another fashion. The next is simply a quick question, because I've not been on the board as long as all of you. How long have we been discussing this zoning bylaw that we're about to present at Town Meeting?
This housekeeping zoning bylaw hasn't been...
Yes.
...for particularly long.
How long? Weeks, months?
I think you mentioned it at the end of June as something that we were gonna anticipate, and you had said then relatively minor housekeeping clarifications. I think you used the word infill. It was the FEMA thing, sort of fairly technical.
It could have been July, Jim.
Maybe late June.
Okay. So the reason I bring that up is to hearken back on other comments. We see we can make changes to zoning bylaws without years and years of looking at things. We're about to make changes to a bylaw that we haven't asked a whole lot of community public input on. So I think it's equally fair to say that maybe we shouldn't pass these because we haven't spent years of looking at it. Just a point with regards to the previous issue. That's all.
With regard to the Board of Selectmen request, you're in favor of removing Number 1?
1 and 2.
It sounds like he is, Madam Chair.
Yeah, he sounds like he is. Brad Goodwin?
Madam Chairman?
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
My suggestion is that if the planning board feels as though that item, the duplex issue, would be a detriment to getting the bylaw passed, then we should consider and vote to either amend it at Town Meeting Floor or let it go. I think it's one of those things we should discuss and make a decision if we keep it or not.
And that's what we're gonna do right now. The decision is to amend on the floor of Town Meeting to remove Number 1 and Number 2 from our zoning article as written in the warrant. So you're in favor of that. Brad Goodwin?
I'll leave it up to the board, not because I'm trying to waffle, but it's gonna be the first Town Meeting I'm not gonna be able to attend in over 30 years. My only suggestion is, if you believe it has merit, and I think Jim hit on a point because I think a builder would get a lower cost per square foot if he or she could build a duplex versus a single family home. Or I think maybe you'd want to fight the fight and explain it. But if it's easier and you think there's some things in this amendment that need to get done right away, then either indefinitely postpone it and bring it back in May, or just withdraw those two. I'll leave that up to the majority of the board.
Okay, thank you. Will?
I'm in favor of amending Numbers 1 and 2, Madam Chair.
Susan?
Yes.
Okay.
Consistent with the board's recommendation.
So we will...
Yes, Kathy, certainly. I think it's very important that we have the amendments to the Village Center Overlay District, and they are definitely housekeeping. I think most people won't even understand what we're talking about because they're just kind of so zoning nerdy nuanced. But I don't want to risk not passing the rest of it for, you know, one developer or two developers who have asked whether this might be something possible, when we can certainly bring that back and discuss it again the next time we take a look at something.
I agree, so we will take a vote to amend the Article Number 22 on the floor of Town Meeting to remove Numbers 1 and 2 as part of the... I'm sorry, let me start again. Let me start again. May I have a motion to amend Article 22 on the floor of Special Town Meeting on November 15th, 2022, by not including any changes to the use table, by deleting Sections 1 and 2 of the proposed article? The planning board shall notify the Board of Selectmen prior to Town Meeting. So moved.
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Roll call. Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mr. Saban?
Madam Chair, I have a quick question, if I may. So if we pass this and make that amendment, and then we go back to look at these two issues at a future date, is there a time clock that goes on to those? Or can we actually look at this after the Special Town Meeting and bring it back at the annual Town Meeting? Or do we have to wait any timeframe to address those other issues?
To be certain, I would have to talk to Town Council about it, but it wasn't voted on. So typically, it needs to be negatively voted on, and it was removed, so no one voted on it. So I would think you could bring it back. I don't think, in all honesty, I think we need to start working on the LCP, and I'm hoping to have some scope information in November. So I don't want to have any zoning for annual Town Meeting anyway, but it's certainly something that we might be able to think about for fall if we have other things that we want to take care of, or whether we want to concentrate on the LCP.
Yep.
I'm fine with that, Madam Chairman. I just didn't want us to take these off the board and have us not be able to talk about them for three years. So I'm in favor of the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Rubenstein?
Aye.
Ms. Britta?
Aye.
Joanne Crowley? Aye. Kathy, the draft of that letter will satisfy?
And I'll just put the vote in of... Sure.
Okay, next on our agenda. May I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes of our October 5th, 2022 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Goodwin?
Aye, abstain.
Mr. Saban?
Aye.
Mr. Rubenstein?
Aye.
Ms. Britta?
Aye.
Joanne Crowley? Yes. Committee updates.
Can I respectfully request that maybe we don't talk about committee updates tonight unless you have something critical to relay?
Nothing, no. I have...
It is quarter to nine.
Yep.
There was one decision by the Zoning Board of Appeals that I found fascinating, and I think it does speak to some of the issues that were brought up tonight. And that has to do with the 90-day variance that was granted for the folks that were senior folks to be in a camper. I mean, that is the level of the seriousness of the issues before multiple boards in our town. And I applaud the Zoning Board of Appeals for giving them, albeit within the statute, if I recall reading it correctly, the max. I think that was allowed. I was glad to see it, but I also was, at the same time, distressed when I read the details about the nature of the veteran and also the age of the applicant. I mean, it was... It's not... It's everybody now. I don't know what else to say, Madam Chair, but I did want to mention it. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Madam Chairman?
Mr. Saban?
Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Rubenstein. The couple that he's referring to, the woman happens to be my daughter's godmother, and I can tell you that I've spent the last six months trying to help them find a place to live. This is a serious issue, and thank you for bringing it up, Will. You're welcome.
Any other board member items? Kathy, you've sent a lot of correspondence our way with regard to the written zoning...
Decision-related.
And there's more than that, no, but...
Yeah. We appreciate that. Any updates you'd like to share with us?
I guess we should probably discuss whether we're going... What we're doing on November 2nd.
Yep.
November 2nd was going to be... I was gonna start advertising and getting together information, which has already started. But on that evaluation, that fall evaluation we were gonna do on the two zoning amendments from the 2022 Annual Town Meeting on short-term rentals and seasonal employee housing at motels and hotels. And then, again, don't forget that the November 16th meeting's gonna be the road, the new road application. So that will probably be a lot of people in the hearing room as well. And then December 7th is going to be the Housing Production Plan presentation to the planning board, where you guys need to offer your recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. And I am on vacation December 21st and will not be here. So I don't know when...
They're all about you, Kathy. No, I'm kidding.
That's who I am, Will.
Right now, I can't be here November 16th. I'm going to be out of town. So I don't know if that's for sure.
Feels like there's some dominoes at play, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I'm wondering, is it possible to hold the November 2nd meeting starting at 5:00? Or 4:45 to give us some extra time? I mean, I
We would have to do the other stuff first because we basically have continued the hearing to our
That's fine. I just figure if we can get I mean, I have a feeling it's not going to be as long as tonight, but if we can start a half hour earlier, 45 minutes early, we can plow through a lot of the basic stuff. I mean, I'm willing to move my day around.
Well, let's look into the crystal ball for a second. I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Goodwin. I mean, based on what, because we continued the public hearing to November 2nd, Madam Chair, are we envisioning another presentation?
It could be short.
Right, I'm not saying there won't be public participation. There clearly will be, and there will be plenty of it. I don't know if we're going to have the 20-ish minutes of presentation at the front, Susan. Right, so I'm just suggesting that it may not be as onerous to do everything on the 2nd, Madam Chair.
Because they would be presenting the changes. Isn't that what?
Correct.
Although we don't know what they're going to present.
They want to continue with what we have.
They could also come back and say they'd like to withdraw. Who knows?
Right, so if we're going to you're going to kind of co-mingle people who might just be coming for one thing and the it might be good, they'll hear more about the ADUs if they come for the other item.
Yeah.
We could do both. It's totally up to you guys.
If we don't do both, then I guess the question is, given the other items on our agenda as well as other people's availability, I'm not sure that works either.
I think the seasonal housing, we promised to do it this fall. I feel committed that we should
Is that a time sensitive, the STRs?
Fitting it in on the 16th with the road hearing could be problematic.
And I don't know if I can attend on the 16th, so I don't know what we're going to be on a quorum, so I'm just giving you a heads up as well.
That's good, so that
Okay, so Britta and
and Goodwin.
I'm certainly okay with having a longer night with both activities in two weeks.
Hopefully, we can get through them.
I am too, but if we could start at 5:00, Kathy. I mean, you've got, I'll move my day around. Anybody else who works, maybe they can do the same thing.
I'll double check.
Madam Chair?
It would need to be the other part would need to go first.
Agreed.
Say the other part. What do you mean?
I'm sorry, the seasonal
Rental on the short-term rental.
Short-term rental, because we basically said we're going to be starting this.
Or we could just do the minutes and the board updates and all that stuff. You know, the boilerplate things we go through.
We have to do every single one of those at every single meeting?
No. You can defer, you can defer things for sure.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
A couple of things. So the seasonal use rental issue that we're going to be talking, discussing, might it be possible to move that at a request from the the business community, or maybe a conversation with them that says we move you to a different date? I know we promised to talk to them, but we didn't promise an exact date.
Yeah, we did. I've spoken to the chamber already. I've been in several conversations with Mary Vilbon, and in fact, we had a conflicting schedule with them on when the seasonal housing update would happen. And this date was the date that she thought most of her members, who were very important participants in developing that, would be able to attend.
Good. Then that makes sense to me as well. I think it's important that we have them participate in a process. The other part is, with regard to the meeting, we can certainly do both and just encourage the chair just to when people start repeating the same thing over and over again, that we just, you know, move them along. And that can cut down the amount of time that we have in the public hearing part. So I think we can
Also be okay with starting at 5:00, Madam Chair, if that is acceptable to the rest of the members.
Logistically, that's a problem because
You just don't know what you're going to do at 5:00 because you want to start the the continued hearing at 5:30, so what are you getting done in that half an hour?
I think we should, I would recommend I would recommend that we stick to the 5:30, and I will do my best to move the meeting along, and I would look to any members of the board to interrupt me and guide me, should I let someone linger beyond a reasonable amount of time.
I will support you in that effort, Madam Chair.
And we'll start with the continued public hearing.
Yes, we will start with the continued public hearing. At 5:30.
And is it, Madam Chairman, is it my understanding that the only two articles on the agenda will be the, those two subjects?
Yes, it's not like a general housing summit. It's really just to get some input on from, I have a bunch of information from town staff on how it went. We're going to also have some different town staff there at that meeting. And then I was also going to do some direct requests from people who utilize the seasonal employee, like the Dempco's and Joe Marama, and see if they can come. And then I was also thinking of maybe sending out a little notice to the people around those to say, how did it go for you this past summer, to see if anybody had any particular issues?
Great.
And is that data that, again, recognizing your work schedule, is that data that you're going to share in advance? Oh, okay, thank you. That's very kind of you.
Is the police chief going to be there? We have some brief feedback from the police department.
Yes, I've been working with be the new chief, Lennon. And he met with staff, and he provided a bunch of data on some calls that they have received, which will be relayed to you guys. And hopefully, he'll also be able to attend the meeting. Unfortunately, Frank will have been officially retired.
That doesn't prevent him from using his voice.
Okay, anything else on the calendar, Kathy, that we? I think that's it, okay. All right, then. I think we know where we're going for the next few weeks, certainly.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Just hearing that two people are going to be gone on November 16th, I need everybody else for quorum in order to have that public hearing. I haven't officially advertised that public hearing yet. I just want confirmation that
Yeah, let me just look.
Let's face it, November 15th is Town Meeting, and hopefully, they don't continue it to the next night. I don't think they will. But we just need, and Chris as well. He did come to site, we did have design review for that project yesterday. It was only yesterday.
Is that the only thing on the agenda that night, Kathy? 16th?
I was hoping to actually talk about the local comprehensive plan scope a little bit, if I can get my act together.
I intend to be there, Madam Chair, as of right now. There's a lot of life that happened.
And I intend to be here.
Jim, are you good for the 16th?
Well, I'm not a prognosticator of the future, but I'm planning to still be alive at that time and present.
Samezies.
We're all agreed on that.
So I'll talk to Chris and make sure he can make that meeting before I actually post it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, that does, sorry, Madam Chair, bring up the issue of having another member and just it is a reasonable time to maybe ask, have we heard anything from the old talent bank?
We have from the talent bank, and we've sent along Selectman McGurran has got to get in touch with them and
Got it. Well, that's somewhat promising.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a very delayed process.
Because, of course, the seventh member would help us when these kinds of issues come up.
Absolutely. Okay.
We're not the only board in this situation.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Sorry, Madam Chair. We can discuss it now if you'd like.
Thank you, Brad.
That's all right. Thank you, Brad. I need to do roll call. Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mr. Saban?
Yes.
Mr. Rubenstein?
Aye.
Ms. Britta? Joanne Crowley?
Aye.
Thank you all. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.